Be responsible. And while the immediate effects of closing a school may be painful, the long-term effects can be beneficial to everyone. The long-term plan proposed addresses the learning needs of our students by capitalizing on the efficient and effective use of our current facilities. If that'll turn it back to Board Chair Hefner.
And we do have public hearing expectations. I'd like to take a minute to read those. To encourage community participation and to conduct these hearings efficiently, the following processes have been established for people who wish to address the school board. Each individual, we've given up to five minutes to testify before the school board. To ensure all have equal time, individuals may not merge allocated speaking minutes or defer allocated minutes to other speakers. Individuals addressing the school board should clearly provide their name and address, including their city, and identify any group that they are representing. Individuals must present testimony in a respectful and professional manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, or abuse, or specific complaints identifying staff or students will not be permitted. Written statements may be provided to school board members by individuals who do not wish to speak. If you wish to provide a statement, please make eight copies to be distributed to board members and the superintendent. The school board will not respond to or discuss comments, but will consider all public input gathered during the hearings. Electronic presentations may be permitted with advance notice, but must fit within the speaker's five minutes. Please contact Barb Prue at 351-8455. And the board chair will terminate the remarks of any individual that does not adhere to the established guidelines. And based on last night's meeting, if I could just suggest, if you share a perspective of a speaker and you want to clap for that speaker, I would ask that you hold that until they're done because the five minutes while they're at the mic is running. So they would probably also prefer that you wait until the end of their five-minute remarks. We've got two microphones set up, as you can see, in each aisle. We'll do a, here is the speaker, here's the person on deck, and here's the person in the hole. So if the following speakers could come up, there are spots reserved in the front row for the following speakers. Carissa will keep track and tell the speakers when they should come up. And if there's nothing else, we'll get her going.
All right. Our first speaker is Andrew Reich, followed by Jay Axelrod and Clayton Heimke.
Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity. It's actually pronounced Rick.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Rick. I live at 12579 Riverview Trail in Stillwater, Minnesota, of course. My oldest son, Jackson, is a second grader at Withrow. My youngest son, Ryan, is a preschooler hoping to attend award-winning Withrow in the near future. When my wife, Trish, and I considered Stillwater as a place to make our home, highest on a priority list for our young family was the quality of the schools within the district. As we narrowed our search, we visited several of Stillwater's elementary schools, ultimately deciding upon northern Stillwater. The traditional classroom environment, the quality of those teachers and leadership at the local level at each of these schools, provided for an ideal nurturing environment and what we believed a successful path for our kids to follow, to learn, and to grow. Unfortunately, our path was diverted shortly after our move. In February of 2009, at age nineteen months, my son, Jackson, was diagnosed with rare cancer, stage four neuroblastoma. We were hospitalized for nine months, and after more than seventy surgical procedures, ten rounds of chemotherapy, and three weeks of radiation, we were able to go home as a family in late November of that year. We then had twenty-four-hour nursing care at home for the next nine months because Jackson was on a ventilator. Fast-forwarding from February of 2009 to September of 2013, Jackson, after much work on his part, is able to finally attend school, but will need more help from the type of environment that Trish and I had chosen prior to his illness. It's a testament to the district and to the, use a word that's been used regularly throughout this process, the true equity within it, that we were able to still find all of those things at Withrow. The purpose of detailing some of our journey and Jackson's journey to health is really twofold. It's important that the board know just how special a place that my wife and I feel Withrow is, and how grateful we are to all those who nurture and support our son daily. We know how, that firsthand, this has truly made a difference in Jackson's life, and just how much will be lost if the school is closed. Number two, in thinking about what we wanted to share with the board, there are parallels to be found in our process and the decision before you. In our years of treatment, we've been fortunate to have some of the very best minds in the world of healthcare support Jackson on his road to recovery. And the very best of those few wanted collaboration. They encouraged constant reassessment. And if they had additional time to make a choice, they utilized every moment. Most of all, they wanted to do what was best for kids so that they would not make a catastrophic choice. Their goal was to do no harm. Throughout each of his nearly three years in school, Jackson has grown exponentially in every area. Physically, academically, and emotionally, he is thriving and would attend school all day, every day, if he could. If you didn't know his medical story, you likely wouldn't know what he's overcome. And as a parent, having been where we've been, being able to say that out loud in front of you all really is a dream come true. Stillwater Schools helped to make that possible. Withrow, and specifically what it uniquely has to offer, has helped to make that possible. Our family is asking that you take a fresh look at this decision, to consider more information so that the best outcomes for all kids within the district, equity for all kids within the district, can be achieved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Axelrod, followed by Clayton Heimke and Lindsay Nelson.
Hi, my name is Jay Axelrod. I live at 15760 Jeffrey Avenue North in Hugo, Minnesota. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the savings estimate that the district has put forward. So in summary, what I'm going to cover in this presentation is that the $1.2 million savings estimate is flawed. They have not accounted for all costs associated with this, with the closures, and there's going to be a net loss unless significant teacher layoffs are made. So just a brief introduction to myself. I've got two kids at Withrow Elementary. I have a degree in electrical engineering. I have a master's in business administration focusing on finance and operations. And then I'm a director at a medical device company with years of experience developing and analyzing financial models and cost comparisons. So as part of the bold initiative, the district has provided a savings estimate of $1.2 million with a million dollars in operational savings from closing the buildings, $120,000 in reduction of full-time employees, $148,000 reduction in support staff. However, they have not accounted for the added costs to move the 700 kids to the remaining elementary schools. They haven't accounted for losses of students to other educational options, and have not accounted for costs to keep Oak Park open as that building's still going to be used. So costs at remaining schools. Seven hundred kids are going to be moving to those schools, but we haven't added in any costs for maintenance, food service, other support staff, electricity, gas, water. I use an estimate of $150,000 to model the increased costs of moving those children to the new schools. Oak Park's going to continue to be utilized. The district has estimated about $500,000 savings from closing that building. I estimate about $250,000 back in because it's still going to remain in use. Open enrollment. One of the factors that hasn't been accounted for is the loss of students to other educational options. The three schools targeted for closure have some of the highest open enrollment rates of any of the schools in the district. You can see Marine and Withrow there in the red, and Oak Park in the red as well. Alternate enrollment is also large for these schools. So of, you can see Oak Park, Withrow, and Marine are some of the highest schools in the district for alternate enrollment. Oak Park is a little bit high because of the special education programs there, but you can see overall the schools do very well. To summarize that even further, so of the 146 total elementary kids that enroll into Stillwater, sixty-two of those kids go to the three schools that we're talking about. Forty-three percent of the students that open enroll from outside District 833 go to these three schools. The story is similar for alternate enrollment, where thirty-five percent of the total go to those three schools. If you can use that as a surrogate for school desirability, it's not that much of a leap to say that you're going to lose children if you close these three schools. So the assumptions I made when putting together this model, I estimated a 75% loss of open enrolled students at $9,000 per student, which I checked with the State of Minnesota Department of Education Finance Director. I estimate a 15% loss of alternate enrolled students, and then a 2% loss of students that are within the school boundary. The ongoing cost to absorb those students sent to the remaining schools, $150,000, $250,000 to keep Oak Park operational. And then for the teacher layoffs, I estimate a cost of $100,000 fully burdened at one teacher per 25 students. Here's where that rolls up. You can see the district's $1.26 million savings on the left, and then as you walk down the chart, you can see the loss of revenue due to the students leaving the district for open enrolled, alternate enrolled, students within the boundaries, added costs at Oak Park, and then the added costs of moving those students to the other schools. If you add all those together, you end up with a net loss of $35,000. The only way this policy saves money is if you lay off teachers. That's where you realize your savings. So that $1.26 million turns into a $363,000 annual savings. Given that, this seems like large change for little gain. It's a $35,000 loss unless you lay off teachers. Empty buildings, financial instability, and school inequity are symptoms. Capture rate is the cause. How does this proposal increase your capture rate and fill those buildings up? You know, I heard one of the comments, too, from the board, I believe it might have been at the first meeting, that they, they had the perspective that, hey, if parents want to send their children to other schools or other districts, that's their choice, and it's, you know, they can have that choice. My point here is, I don't want to send my kids to another district. I want to send them to Stillwater. But with these closures, I'm not going to have that options. Clayton's going to come up here after me, and he's going to talk about the risk of open enrollment and why I'm estimating that risk to be as high as it is. Thanks.
Before you start, Clayton, Lindsay Nelson will be next, and then Sadie Bettendorf. Thank you.
You can use the same presentation.
No, just the same one that, I'm just finishing off, Jay, isn't it? I'm going to talk a little. There, oh. We'll get there. We'll get there. All right. So why is there an open enrollment?
Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, sorry, George, thank you. I am Clayton Heimke. I live at 14044107th Street North in Stillwater Township. I have a fourth grader at New Heights and a first grader at Withrow. So the open enrollment risk. I am not an open enrollee. Jay is, but I was an alternate enrollment enrollee at one point, and my family moved within boundaries. So why do we feel like it's going to decrease so much? Parents don't want to probably be sending their kids to the home district. There are high-performing districts that don't accept open enrollment. Private schools are expensive. Charter schools are full. People have moved to this area to attend these schools. So here's the northern part of the district. What you'll see next is really where the, that forty-three percent that Jay speaks of comes from. It comes from the northwest area of the district. So if we close these schools, what you'll see next is we're going to have a compression moving towards the southern part of the district. Now you're, we're going to be encouraging these families to have to drive all the way down into town after-school activities and pickup. It significantly changes the dynamic of the family environment, especially if they have to go back into town later in the evening for other activities. And here's the other challenge with it. Well, you have to take your kids towards town to go to work, to go to school. In order to go to work, many of these families who have come out to this area have to go back towards the Twin Cities to go to work. So it's not whether we want to send our kids to Stillwater. It's whether, the problem is, we, a lot of families can't continue to if they're enroll, open enrolling into the district. Now, another component to this is student loss of, we only accounted for 2% student loss within the, within boundaries. From my experience and my family's experience with having a daughter that attends New Heights, we started this year homeschooling. When this announcement was made, we started receiving a lot of inquiries about our experiences outside of the district while, while living within the boundaries of the district. It gave me great concern for, for the overall loss. To be candid, you know, Jay, I think was trying to be conservative here. You can put the numbers a lot of different ways. There's a survey done, and if you look at just the Marine and Withrow families, you would lose greater than 300 students at this point. Of course, some of that is emotional, but even if you peel it back to 150, it's a great loss. A great loss to have to come up with the funding for the taxpayers, and then where are we left in order to build the programming? I mean, it's about capacity. It's about programming. It's about funding. Seems to be a moving target that breaks the circle in, in the cycle of what we're trying to accomplish here. The challenge of what these schools provide that, that we're not accounting for, and I hear and I, I understand the perspective that culture's going to be rebuilt, but the reason my family moved to Stillwater was for the schools in general. Because of the needs of one of our children, we found ourselves alternate-enrolling from Oak Park Heights out to Withrow, ultimately buying a home in Withrow because of the environment, because it's a right learning environment for my child. These are unique environments that are great sales points for the district, that I don't feel we, we do enough to push. And I, the, the schools do an incredible job to, to market and to attract folks. But I think overall, the district can, can do more in that environment. Moving towards New Heights was, was a journey for our family, and it was a great journey. It's, it's an incredible school. One thing that's frustrated me about some of the dynamic in the, the discussion we have heard from, from the administration is, last week in the learning session, it was discussed of ongoing discussions with the principal of New Heights and the director there. Last night, I was at a program at New Heights, and I talked to the principal about it, and I, you know, I just was encouraging him about it. And there are a lot of inconsistencies in the discussion and what was presented as factual. And I would encourage the school board to reach out to the principal of New Heights to understand more where, where the position is. I know he would like to partner more with the district. But at this time, I think there's a lot more to be learned about New Heights and where the current state is for the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lindsay, Lindsay Nelson will be followed by Sadie Bettendorf and Kiva Schur.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Nelson, and I live in Millbrook, and I am a Withrow parent. The Bold Plan has many worthy intentions. For example, equitable distribution of student resources and increased education opportunities. I believe that all parents here want these things for all students. However, 30 years of national education literature proves that school consolidation does not result in increased access to student resources or better education opportunities. In fact, the research shows that closing smaller schools and creating fewer but larger schools results in decreased academic performance and student achievement, lower standardized test scores, lower college admissions, decreased parent involvement, higher rates of discipline problems like bullying and violence, increased truancy and substance abuse, and higher dropout rates. You may think that some of the problems I have listed are not applicable to elementary students. However, these are the results listed by hundreds of evidence-based, peer-reviewed studies that quantify the outcomes of students' grade levels K through six that experience small school closure with subsequent placement into larger schools. Pontrelli told us many times, while small schools have many benefits, it is not cost-effective to keep Withrow and Marine open. Research acknowledges that cost per pupil is approximately 1.2% higher for students from smaller schools. However, if you calculate the cost per graduate instead of cost per pupil, you will find that cost per graduate is less for students from small schools compared to those from large schools because small schools have lower dropout rates and cost per pupil does not account for money invested in students that drop out. Measuring per graduate instead of per pupil cuts the annual cost differences between small schools and large schools in half. Therefore, it is not cost-effective to close Withrow and Marine and create future, fewer larger schools. Neighborhood schools like Withrow, Marine, and Oak Park offer resources to help meet social, recreational, health, and personal needs of the community. These schools are among the few places that provide meeting spaces, recreation centers, and/or provide before and after-school programs, sustaining vitality, influencing tax revenues, and residential and commercial growth for these communities. Studies show that students who travel longer distances to attend school participate less in extracurricular activities, and their parents are less involved, both of which are strongly associated with poor academic performance and decreased student achievement. Areas without schools do not attract young families, and school closings typically result in a 25% decrease in nearby property values. Over 2,100 parents and community members have signed a petition to stop the Bold proposal. Many parents have also expressed plans to pull their children from the district if Bold is approved. Already, some parents have taken their children out of the district because they are so distrustful and dismayed with the current direction and leadership of this district. Bold will encourage students to exit the district, further exasperating our fiscal problems. For example, in 2011, in Pleasant Valley, California, school administrators predicted a cost savings of $700,000 through closing schools, but ended up losing $2.4 million when hundreds of parents pulled their students from the district within months. Pontrelli has referred to this problem as a one-time expected loss, claiming that Bold will entice future parents to bring their children into the district. My question is this: Why value our existing students and families, those currently living in our communities, less than hypothetical students and families who don't even live here? Bold claims equitable distribution of student resources and increased education opportunities by fixing the district's capacity issue. Administrators often argue that underutilized schools are no longer cost-effective and should be closed. However, with enrollment rates ever fluctuating, every year producing capacity surpluses or deficits, how can administrations soundly base school closure on the grounds of capacity? After searching through thousands of education journals and research studies, I have failed to find even one example where a district consolidated its highest-performing schools and had any positive outcomes. There is no evidence to support Bold's proposed benefits. What we know, what is based in fact and tested by time, is that closing these schools is detrimental to students and their communities. School board members and district administrators, I understand you have a difficult job in even the best of times. However, I do not understand how you can propose and/or support a plan that is not based on factual information or supported by any evidence-based, peer-reviewed research. Please ask yourself if all the costs affecting students and communities have been weighed, and if you don't believe they have, I urge you to vote no to Bold.
Sadie Bettendorf. Sadie will be followed by Kiva Schur and Sandy Hayner.
I'm Sadie Bettendorf. I'm a fourth-grade Withrow YO cat. I live in Scandia, and I'm open enrolled into Withrow. My older sister, Tracy, went to Marine. She graduated in class of 1998 from Stillwater and now, from Stillwater and now serves in the Air Force. My parents hoped I would have a similar, similar early educational opportunity. We chose Withrow. I'm so glad we picked Withrow. I love it there. I am so happy at school. I feel like everyone at Withrow is family. They are, are warm and friendly. We care about each other and help each other learn and grow. The teachers and staff are all wonderful and helpful. They know us all by name. They are all so nice and friendly. My fan, my friends feel the same way. If you closed my school, it'd make me sad. The school I love would be gone. The other kids would not have the same chance to experience how to, how great Withrow is. I have heard some of the younger students talk about how worried and scared they are about the school, our school possibly closing. They are afraid of what school they may have to go to next. I feel badly for them. Our Withrow community is like a small town. We stick together, and we know, and we can count on each other to be there through good times and sad times. Recently, one of my classmates lost her mom. She was a, she was also a para at Withrow. It was very sad for the entire school. We all supported and helped each other. I like going to school. Each day when I walk in, it just feels so comfortable and nice. Some, someone is always there, smiling, opening the door, and telling us to have a good day. It was just, it would just not be the same at another school. Over Christmas break, I asked my parents, how many more days until school starts? I was excited to get back into class with my teachers and friends. Please think a lot, please think about this a lot, of, a lot, and take your time in making such a big decision, and please don't vote to close my school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kiva will be followed, Kiva will be followed by Sandy Hayner and Jim Hall.
My name is Kiva Schur Nelson. I live on Rice Street in Stillwater. Three years ago, we were told that our son was on the autism spectrum. At home, he was a happy, funny, sweet boy with a huge smile. At school, he was bullied and teased for being over-emotional and forgetful. He was miserable. Pleas to his teacher on his behalf were ignored. Like many kids on the spectrum, he was acutely sensitive and picked up on the impatience of the adults and students around him. He cried every morning, saying he didn't want to go to school. Luckily, we found a small, traditional school, and it has changed our lives. As parents of children on the spectrum know, many times these kids perform very well academically but struggle socially. Simple things like walking to your locker can be challenging. After years of searching, three schools in three years, we found the right-sized school for us. At his previous school in the district, he had a lengthy IEP. He had more access to special services, but he needed more just to counteract the overstimulation and social dynamics of a large school. The fact is, his teachers did not have time to devote to the care of his heart and his spirit. Small schools need to be a choice in our district. When I had my first meeting to discuss his IEP after his initial adjustment to Withrow, half of it was deemed unnecessary. The small school environment or program is soothing. It lacks the noise and transitions that larger or open-format schools may have. The traditional classroom setting is a necessary part of what students like him need to become the best students they can be. A lengthy IEP was shortened by teachers who were able to take the time that he needed to connect with them. The small school program works for children like my son. There is absolutely no way that you can guarantee that our children will ever find another school experience like Withrow, Marine, or Oak Park. From my perspective, this is not an acceptable risk to take for any of these kids, especially since the Bold Plan has so many unknown variables and ramifications. Eighty-three percent of the special ed students at Withrow open or alternate enroll there. This is after parents have assessed and researched and done due diligence to find the school that works best for them. It is a huge thing for children like my son to move from school to school. We understand that you must represent all of the students in the district, but we really have not heard who exactly is benefiting and how they will benefit. The superintendent has said that she is open to hearing alternative plans, but we have been given such a very short window of time. Please show us with your no vote that you are open to working with us to find a solution. There is a much bigger issue than just your three schools. Once these small, traditional schools are gone, we will not be able to get them back. We live in a culture that is all too quick to embrace the convenience of the big-box chains, and then we mourn the loss of connection and community and individuality. I feel like this will determine the path we have taken for generations to come. Once these schools are dismantled, they cannot be put back together. And I would ask the Bold, I mean, I would ask the board, sorry. Are you 100% ready to attach your name to Bold? Are you ready to attach your name to the legacy that it will leave? Regarding all the parents who have said that they will leave the district if Bold passes, this is not a threat. I'm not saying this to be rude or to incite anger. My husband and I work four jobs between us to keep our thousand-foot square Are you ready to attach your name to the legacy that it will leave? Regarding all the parents who have said that they will leave the district if BOLD passes, this is not a threat. I'm not saying this to be rude or to incite anger. My husband and I work four jobs between us to keep our 1,000-foot-square fixer-upper in Stillwater. We have often considered leaving the district, but what is kept is here has always been school choice. We have done the hard work for you. We have invested our time, our insight into our child to find what is best for them. Some of us have no other choice but to leave. I resent the point of view that has been allowed to flourish through propaganda that Wethro and Marine represent a privileged few benefiting from a bigger share than most. When you actually dig into those numbers, those are false. Look at the open enrollment numbers into the northern schools. To quote Paul Wellstone, "When we all do better, we all do better." Work with parents to make this district better. I believe that if you open your minds to the hundreds of talented people in this district who are poised to collaborate with you, the capture rates will increase. How can we destroy these traditional communities without spending more time making sure it's the right decision? You owe us the chance to try.
Sandy will be followed by Jim Hall and Heidi Heimke.
Hi, my name is Sandy Heiner. I live in Stillwater, and I represent a portion of your non-captured population. I have to talk fast in order to get all this in, so work with that. All right, I have four school-aged children who do not attend your district schools. A few years ago, my oldest, at the age of eight, told me he felt like school was sucking out his soul. As a teacher, I found this incredibly disturbing and disheartening. How could this be? He's a top student, he has lots of friends, he's loved by teachers deemed by all the benchmarks and assessments and tests as successful. I had to really listen to my children and dig into the cores of the system to find the answer. I'm here to share the uncomfortable realities I've had to learn and how they relate to BOLD. Some may think that those who do not attend district schools have no skin in the game. Yet, at each and every listening session, city hall meeting, learning session, et cetera, the capture rate comes up in a way that somehow insinuates that the budgeting issues of 834 lie squarely on the shoulders of the 3,000 students who don't step foot into your buildings, depriving you of their dollars. There's a strange confidence that after schools close, students are lost, classes sizes are increased, resources are consolidated, and the addition of more elusive programming, the district will recapture my children. Being pretty involved with many of the outlier parents, I can assure you, we don't see it that way. Webster defines capture as "to take by force, strategy, to imprison, to seize." This is the way the administration speaks of our children. The leadership team has also referred to our children as products. We've heard exactly how much some products are worth. They should all have the same price tag and the name of equity, of course. Part of the plan entails capturing these products from their tiny, local preschools. We hear nothing of nurturing, but only of their dollar value. This will destroy small businesses. It is even said that the old people in their old homes aren't dying or moving away, which hurts the bottom line. Community what? Our superintendent states that this is not about wonderful schools, it's just that smaller schools are more expensive to run and bigger schools provide a better economy of size, and then adds, "It's not about the money." We're told all district students are to have a consistent experience, but definitely not cookie cutter, not common, that's blasphemy. Equity sounds better. Here's my main point: This is cookie cutter. I've been paying attention to the National Education Matters for years, and while many are surprised at this consolidation of our products, I am not. Stillwater may be unique, and its citizens and teachers may be extraordinary, but this plan is none of those things. It's the same plan that many districts around the state and the nation have been implementing, a failing plan, I might add, but I suppose that would depend on one's measure of success. When a district allows itself to be guided by for-profit organizations with the lust of state and federal dollars, they lose their identity. Your BOLD justifications are word-for-word marketing taglines of those very entities. Five Minutes does not allow me to elaborate, but the bottom line is, thousands of parents do not want their children being directed by the corporate, political, and special-interest groups who would advise you to reduce each student down to a common core product at the interest of finances. It's not just an ineffective math approach we laugh at. Common Core is designed to infiltrate all aspects of education and efforts to convert to a centrally-planned education, ignoring family, community, culture, and history. Joining their program and initiatives, purchasing their books, and adopting their standards taints leadership motivation. The board has legal rights to reject all of this. I wonder if you've even had the time to research the CEOs of groups like DMC to understand how our other financial, monolithic corporate interests and recommendations may negatively influence your decisions. I understand the administration may be doing what they believe to be right. However, that's based on faith, not facts. It's based on what they've paid tens of thousands of dollars to be trained to believe by people who've never been to our community, people who've never met our children. What if that training is misguided, misleading, and self-serving? Where's the evidence of value? Where are the hardball questions? I ask the board to be ferocious in your research. Our communities need you to dig in. Equity, equality, and redistribution are trendy words in education, far above concepts like individual superior achievement or individual worth. Equity defined by the Department of Ed reports now means forced mandated redistribution of all things, including teachers, principals, standards, tests, and money. This sameness, the one size that fits all, that claims to ensure that no one fails, only ensures that no one can soar. It's a terrible plan, and it's not just about putting a great teacher in front of students. Parents know their children best. No data spreadsheet or test will ever compare. The best programming always happens between teachers, students, and parents. The further you move away from that trio, the more expensive and ineffective it becomes. History proves this. If inequities are really the issue, it lies in the fact that out of the $10,000 per pupil spending in 834, 8,500 is for staff and only 400 is used for learning. Let's redistribute that a little better. If education has become, as BOLD openly declares about classrooms, budgets, and programming, concerns about cost testing and data pale in comparison to the concerns for the hearts, minds, and souls of our children, my son was right. Despite the wonderful friends, teachers, and parents many have, many schools have, even a child can tell when his worth is reduced to a score, a price has been placed on his head, his questions are a nuisance, and his dreams are not aligned to the standards. Sometimes we get so lost, we can't see the forest for the trees. I ask you to take a step back. Who benefits? Who loses? Is this truly what students want? Have you even asked them? And if you won't ask them, at least talk to their parents. By trying to block their voices, the designers of this plan have caused blowback. A large, community-based movement has arisen to oppose BOLD. This board has been elected to represent us, not the administration. We ask that you please reflect that. John Taylor Gatto says, "What is good for systems is really good for human beings." Until these human children reach the top of the priority list, I'd imagine you just keep having students run away from the system. Fun fact, the opposite of capture is...
Thank you for your comments. Your Five Minutes is up.
The cycle will continue. Who will the administration blame then? Thank you.
Jim will be followed by Heidi Heimke and John T. Bauer.
My name is Jim Hall. I live in Circle Pines, Minnesota. My granddaughter attends Wethro, and my grandson will be attending Wethro next school year in preschool, which will be a new program. I'm retired recently, after 31 years at 3M Company and 11 years as a financial advisor. Synergy is where the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. I would bet the people who work to achieve blue-ribbon status at Wethro experience some synergy. On a continuum, synergy would be over here, and dysfunction would be over here. Regardless of where the administration and the school board is on this continuum, they can work towards synergy. Here are some suggestions for your consideration. Develop a partnership with the parents. Work together with the parents on committees. Share information. Full transparency. I've heard the administration say that Wethro is referred to as a low-efficiency school. How is efficiency measured? Is it the total operating cost of the school divided by the number of students? If it is, what is it now? What has it been historically? What is it predicted to be in the future? And what are all the assumptions that go with those predictions? How does it compare to each of the other schools? Put it in perspective with other measurements, objective measurements, and subjective criteria, because decisions are not made only on one measurement. Develop alternatives. Brainstorm when developing alternatives. When you do this, you get a lot of alternatives, and you may find that there's more than one right answer. When you have that situation, you take the best from the both of those right answers for your final proposal. I've heard the administration refer to the students as their product. My opinion is that the product of the school system is the education, the skills, and the values that the students learn. And the students are the district's customers, the school system's customers. So to summarize, I recommend that the school board and administration partner with parents, use full transparency working with parents, develop alternatives, and remember that the students are your customers. Thinking and working with these ideals can lead to better decisions for parents and students.
Heidi Heimke. Heidi will be followed by John T. Bauer and Sandra Ellis.
Hi, my name is Heidi Heimke, and I reside in Stillwater Township. My husband Clayton spoke before. We have two children. One is currently attending Wethro Elementary, and one is currently attending New Heights Charter. Both of my children receive special education. I speak as a parent with a background in special education who came to the district because I value choices in my kids' education. Our family moved to Stillwater from District 833 because we liked the choices and learning environments that Stillwater had to offer, most notably your small school programming. Our oldest, we purchased a home in the Wethro attendance boundary in 2014. What we found at Wethro was an incredible community of educators, learners, and parents that have become our family and our community. My children feel seen and understood by each person they come into contact with, which creates an environment of security and safety and encourages them to learn, take risks, form relationships, and grow in a community that makes them feel known. I also speak as someone who currently has one foot in the district and one foot out. I question if you've considered whether you're acting on behalf of all students residing in 834 or only the ones that attend 834 schools. I understand why many families would make other choices, especially after the trust that has been broken most recently with this BOLD proposal and the lack of meaningful dialogue with the stakeholders. As a New Heights parent, I've had the opportunity to see what makes New Heights a successful school and an option for many families in our district that we've failed to capture. The student population is diverse at New Heights. 60% of the students at New Heights receive free and reduced lunch. 40% have IEPs, and New Heights is well-equipped to serve these students. New Heights also offers a small, traditional, closed classroom environment. New Heights pulls approximately 85% of their students from District 834. Tom Carney, principal at New Heights, told me that rarely has New Heights pulled from Marine and Wethro attendance boundaries, in large part because parents of the kids in these schools experience a small, school-meaningful education for their kids. It's likely that if you shutter Wethro and Marine, many families will go in search of another small, traditional school environment. I would not be dismissive of New Heights' potential or influence and would encourage a more open dialogue and partnership with New Heights, including slowing down the process of the sale of the building. It is the right thing to do for New Heights and the fiscally-responsible thing to do for the district as well. The district currently collects $200,000 in lease monies. In closing, my family, like many families in 834, value choice, and I will choose learning environments that are best for my kids, whether it's in the district or out of it. My education and training and teaching does not make me an expert in my children. Being their parent does. Don't take my choice away, and don't take other parents' choices away. Thank you.
John will be followed by Sandra Ellis and Barb Witchen.
Hi, my name is John Bauer. I live at 12405 O Chipway Avenue in May Township. First of all, I would like to indicate that I fully support the resolution from May Township that hopefully was presented to the school board. I think they're dead on. Also, I'd like to indicate, I had two sons that both attended Wethro School. They were struggling previous there at Stonebridge. They did well at Wethro. They struggled again when they went to Stillwater Junior High. But luckily, I think the time they spent at Wethro did a lot of good for them. They both are now currently engineers and have very good jobs. Also, in the many years that I volunteered, my time in Washington County, we supported environmental education and watershed education at the schools. I was glad I was able to do that. I was also able to participate as a parent in the geography bee at Wethro. So I was very surprised when I just heard recently that Marine and Wethro were going to be closed. Somehow, I missed having an opportunity to vote on the referendum when it happened. I'm not sure why. I guess that's my fault, but I was shocked when I found out that my house payment was going up and didn't get a chance to vote, and now they're closing the schools.
Sandra Ellis, Barb Witchen, and Gary Wallach.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Ellis. I reside at 8590 136th Street North in Hugo. I have a son in the middle school and a son at Wethro Elementary. The first thing I'd like to say is thank you. Thank you to every one of the board members and to the administration and people here from Stillwater School District. I can't say how important it is that I'm standing here and you're listening to me. I love this about where we live and who we are, and I'm proud of being a Stillwater School District parent. In fact, quite a few of you have met me before. I happen to be one of the biggest cheerleaders of the Stillwater School District. And a lot of the administration persons standing outside, when I walked in, she goes, "I know you from somewhere, don't I?" So a lot of people here know that when it comes to volunteering for any kind of activity here in the school district, I raise my hand. And so, it is with such a heavy heart that I stand up here and I think, "Why didn't we have these conversations six months ago? Why is it now that, you know, in late December, I heard about what was going to happen or what potentially could happen to our schools?" I have been an advocate of everything this district has done because I believe that you gave everyone an option to be a part of that decision. And everything I read says Stillwater School District and parents, and Stillwater School District and teachers, and parents, and parents, and parents. And yet, somehow, we missed the biggest opportunity with our brand-new administration. I'm so happy that we have a new superintendent here to lead us, but I think we missed such a huge opportunity to get to know each other, and here we are, six months into your administration, and we're fighting. Instead of working together to solve the problems here in Stillwater School District, we're having these meetings to discuss a vote, when maybe if we had worked together from the beginning, we, with all the incredible, intelligent, and motivated parents and administration and board members, could be solving these problems now instead of taking sides over the issue. So it's not too late. That's what the good news is. You're here listening to us. We're here trying to work with you. Please, let's try to get back the trust and the community and the fellowship that this community is so incredibly known for and so proud of, and I am proud to be here. And I just ask that you think about what we can do together, all of us together, instead of separated. We're so much stronger. So please, give us the opportunity, work with you, to solve these issues here by giving us more time. And again, I just thank you for being here tonight, last night, and tomorrow night as our voices in this community, and I trust that what you're going to do will be the right thing for all of us. So thank you. Thanks again.
Barb Witchen. Barb will be followed by Gary Wallach and Julie Casterly.
Good evening. My name is Barb Witchen. My husband and I live in White Bear Lake. Good evening. My name is Barb Witchen. My husband and I live in White Bear Lake. I have been the secretary at Withrow Elementary for six and a half years. I'm a native of White Bear, where I, along with our four children, attended public school. I'm the mom to a stepson, two birth sons, and an adopted Korean daughter. We are what our adoption social worker referred to as a contemporary family. A person I cared a lot about once gave me a book by Mr. Rogers with the following quote, "As human beings, our job in life is to help people realize how rare and valuable each of us really is, that each of us has something that no one else has or ever will have, something inside that is unique to all. It's our job to encourage each other to discover that uniqueness and to provide ways of developing its expression." Withrow Elementary is a place where any child can excel, but its true beauty is with kids who struggle in bigger schools. Excuse me, I'm shaking like a leaf. I am so nervous. While we aren't right-sized because we can't house three sections for each grade, and we don't have grade-level teams of teachers, what we do have is cohesive staff that works closely together. When our children leave kindergarten, they are well-prepared for first grade because their teachers have had an ongoing dialogue between them about their individual progress, learning style, and even their little idiosyncrasies, and there had already been a casual and friendly interaction between them and their new teacher. It is virtually impossible for these kids to fall through the cracks because we all know them and their families so well. Families come to Withrow from all over. Twenty-five percent of our kids are alternate or open-enrolled. Over the years, there have been many misconceptions about Withrow and its success. We have invited district staff, administrators, and board members to come and see what we're about and why we work so well. Those that do see the special place our school is, but unfortunately, many have not taken us up on our invitation. So I'd like to address some of these misconceptions. Number one is that our class sizes are small. When I started in 2010, our enrollment was approximately 130 students. The first-grade class was only 13 students, but it was a true anomaly. When that same class moved on to junior high last year, it had grown to 21. Our enrollment has increased every year in every grade, and our classes all fall well within the district ranges, with most of our classes over 25. We currently have 189 students with two sections of first grade due to a huge influx of kindergarteners in 2014. Number two, the community is affluent. Like any other school, we do have families who have higher incomes, but they don't represent our entire demographic. Our free reduced lunch percentages are on a par with other district schools. We have people who do not have a lot of money. They struggle with the same things that many families, including my own, do, things like divorce, single parenting, and job loss, just to name a few. Three, we have more stuff than other schools. We have a lot of love, but as a smaller school, we also have a much smaller budget. It doesn't cost us any less to purchase a lunchroom table or a Chromebook because we're small. Our parents and community members make it a priority to work very hard on fundraisers and outreach to local businesses to raise funds to keep our school the best it can be. Four, Withrow is a national Blue Ribbon School of Excellence because it's so small. This isn't a size issue. There are many large schools in the country that have received the same recognition, and receiving it isn't something that we should have to apologize for. In reality, there should be a sense of pride in Stillwater that Withrow is the most recent recipient of this honor in the school district. It should bring us together, not divide us. One of the things that make no sense to so many people in and out of the Stillwater District is the closing of not just Withrow, but Marine and Oak Park, as all three are Blue Ribbon Schools. One of the things I hear so often, since this proposal was made, is "Don't fix what's not broken," and instead, closing the schools, figure out why they work so well. Number five, no new families will be moving into the Withrow area. We actually have a number of new families who have moved into our boundaries in the last year, and more continue to do so. Families move into the area specifically so that their children will be able to attend Withrow, and contrary to what some are saying, there actually are brand-new homes with young families that have just been built, and others will be built. I've run out of time, but I just want to tell you that my last point was not everyone can get their children to Withrow, and that is also false. And I have more information, and I will make copies for you, but we have children that have hardships just like everyone else, and yet their parents get them there. So of course, not everyone's going to be able to come, but not everyone from Withrow would be able to go south either. So thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Gary Wallach will be followed by Julie Casterly and Greg Nelson.
Hi, my name is Gary Wallach. I'm not very comfortable up here, but I'll get through it because it's important. It would be nice if we could have a real dialogue with questions and answers, but because the process was set up for these meetings the way it is, I'll give my comments. My three kids went to Withrow twenty years ago, and I'm here because I want to impress upon you how important Withrow is to our little Hugo community and our children's schools. They are more than just learning institutions. They are the heartbeat of our community, especially in little rural settings like Withrow is to Hugo, Grant, and May Township. I would bet that many 834 people whose children do not attend Withrow and Marine schools do not even know where these schools are. Withrow was and still is a place to learn and grow, but more importantly, it is a place for neighbors to meet and form friendships. Children learn and play together during school hours, but then get involved in after-school activities. This brings the parents together, and more friendships are formed, continually building up our rural community. And all these friendships started with our little neighborhood local schools. The bonds my kids made years ago in grade school are everlasting. In fact, my son, who lives in Indianapolis, still considers his grade-school neighborhood friends his closest and dearest friends, and still finds time to get together with them multiple times a year. If Withrow were to close, our kids would be bused to other schools nowhere close to where they live, and they would still be with their same friends and neighbors, but the new school could not give them that neighborhood-community feeling they enjoy here at Withrow, which I think is so important in their developmental years. I think that closing three of 834's best-performing schools, one of them ranked number fourteen in the nation, just sounds ridiculous in itself. It is quite evident that the children at these schools are thriving, and the staff and parent volunteers, many of which my children had over twenty years ago, are still pouring their hearts and talents out to our children because they love their school, and the community of Withrow thrives because of it. My wife and I moved our family to Hugo over twenty years ago for the experience of rural living, but we chose specifically where we lived so our kids could attend Withrow and later Stillwater Junior and Stillwater High. I beg you to step back, listen to the voice of your constituents, and listen to the voice of reason. Most of us here were in favor of the school's levies because we wanted what was best for our children and was best for our community's future. I don't think closing the schools is what's best for us in the northern part of 834. In the end, there may still need to be school closings, but let's look at the impact these closings will have on our communities, as well as the input it will...the impact it will have on our children. Let's take time to have a real dialogue and to look at options before making any hasty decisions. I beg you to vote no to this proposal. Let's go back to the drawing board and make sure we get it right. Our future depends upon it. I have no kids at Withrow, but I'm here trying to save Withrow because of What...because of what Withrow and its wonderful staff does and what it has done for our community for decades. Thank you.
Julie will be followed by Greg Nelson and Eric Anderson.
Good evening. Julie Casterly, 568 Eben Court, Stillwater, Minnesota. I'm a parent of two children attending Marine Elementary, but I am a Stillwater resident. Bold equals busing. Approval of bold is an approval of extensive and expanded busing. Bold is vague, and it's fairly ill-defined, so we don't know the full extent of this busing. But we do know that there are hundreds of students from Marine and Withrow who would be sent down to central schools. The best available comparables, based on Google Maps, the Bear Bus from Rutherford to Marine and the school bus from downtown Marine to Stillwater Junior High, all indicate a running time of probably around fifty-five minutes from Marine to a receiving school. Is a fifty-five-minute, one-way bus ride an acceptable choice for a six-year-old student? Really, is that acceptable for any student in this district? Per the academic literature, a "long bus ride" is generally defined as one exceeding thirty minutes. According to educational researcher Beth Spence, the evidence suggests that, quote, "Long bus rides have negative effects on family life, the ability of students to perform well in school, and students' ability to fully participate in the school experience." As noted, scholar Michael Fox states, "Time on the school bus is 'empty time,' which keeps students from engaging in other activities such as homework. The commute time will likely preclude many families in those communities from participating in sports or other organized extracurricular activities, especially given that many of those activities are based in Stillwater." As far as I can tell, this district's plan assigns no value to our kids' time. As Ramaj and Howley note in their study, quote, "Too often, school leaders consider only the practicality of bus rides rather than considering the effect of those bus rides on school performance and home lives." This district's Investing Where It Counts flyer trumpeted the claim that if bold passes, twelve teachers will, quote, "spend less time traveling and more time teaching." That's great, but what about the hundreds of students stuck on the bus? Don't you think the priority of this district should be less time traveling and more time learning for the kids? I am tired of bold's highly selective version of equity. How is requiring some kids to travel that far, that long equitable? At the January 21 learning session, district staff stated that when considering which school is to close, they rejected out of hand any scenario that required displaced students to be driven past the nearest elementary school to another school. And they said it would be simply too hard to explain to those students why they had to go past a school to a remote school. Why is it okay for a Marine or a Withrow child to be bused two hours a day, but not okay to bus another kid past a school? And I say this not as a Marine or Withrow community resident. I say this as a Stillwater resident. This is offensive to me. I think Beth Spence said it best, quote, "Policy involving school closings and long bus rides, above all, should take into account the real-life experiences of real people, the children and families who are paying the highest price for current transportation and school consolidation decisions. Atmospheric issues, including diverse age struggles, inadequate driver supervision, inappropriate language, and student conflicts, are all common complaints by parents who have children subject to long bus rides." You have a number of parents here who will gladly tell you about that. I happen to be one of them. Ask any one of us. And make no mistake, it's not just the kids on those buses that are going to suffer. Their behavior and readiness to learn is going to directly affect the children in those receiving schools as well. Do you honestly believe, against common sense, academic research, and public opinion, that choosing...because this would be a choice, choosing to bus elementary school kids for nearly two hours a day is a good or legitimate educational practice, or do you truly believe that that's equitable? These kids didn't create this mess, and in my opinion, it would be cowardly and it would be wrong to try to fix the mess at the expense of those children and their education. And I want to note something else. Busing is one of many reasons I object to the bold plan, but perhaps the most important is this. If you approve this plan, you break specific promises that your chosen superintendents made to the community. Once you've asserted that you have the right to break promises at will, how can anyone trust you in the future?
Greg Nelson will be followed by Eric Anderson and Krista Thomas.
Greg Nelson, 3185 Marine Lane, Stillwater. I'm here tonight to talk about integrity. Everyone in this room, everyone in this community, has serious and valid reasons to question the integrity of this process and the integrity of the administration. What hangs in the balance, ladies and gentlemen, what is truly at stake on February 11th, is whether or not the parents and community members of District 834 will have cause to question the integrity of this board. The process used to develop and present this so-called bold proposal to the public appears to be purposely designed to ramrod a reckless, ill-advised experiment through the approval process before parents and the community can effectively react. First, Ms. Petrelli developed this proposal in secret, behind closed doors, without involving the impacted parents and community members. Then, Ms. Petrelli unveiled the proposal a week before Christmas, when most parents and community members were focused on the upcoming holiday break. When Ms. Petrelli officially presented the proposal to the board January 7, rather than allowing parents and community members to provide feedback after they had actually seen the presentation, you, the board, regulated us to a pre-meeting listening session in the back of the room with a broken microphone and only two board members present. And now, we come to this public hearings that are allegedly designed to allow us to share our feedback with school board members and district leaders. The rules of this presentation, that all presenters would be limited to five minutes, presenters were not allowed to combine times, and any individual presentations would have to be submitted twenty-four hours in advance, hardly appears to be a process designed to solicit thoughtful and informed feedback. When I look at the fact pattern related to this process, it highly suggests that there has been a willful intent, a strategic decision, to employ a process that works to silence dissenting voices, limit public investigation of the details, and prevent effective opposition. One cannot help but to question the integrity of this entire process. Unfortunately, when I examine the actions and behaviors of this administration, the question of integrity arises once again. Ms. Petrelli has asserted on multiple occasions that the administration was shocked when it uncovered the capacity issue. Her administration was adamant that the issue only recently came to light because an in-depth capacity study had never been completed, that the decision to close schools only made after every other option, every other alternative was thoroughly explored, that closing schools was the only option left. Unfortunately, this simply is not true. The previous administration did indeed conduct an in-depth capacity study, in fact, multiple studies, and their studies produced similar results. However, the previous administration offered a different solution, one that specifically excluded closing schools. How is it that Ms. Petrelli didn't know about this? How do we reconcile the administration's narrative with these facts? Ms. Petrelli has stated numerous times that she's never seen any alternatives. Maybe that's because she wasn't looking for them. At minimum, this information raises questions about the administration's competence, but for many of us, the questions raised are far more serious. As board members, you are accountable for the decisions and the actions of this administration. Your role as board members is to serve as a check on the administration, not a rubber stamp. Your duty is to ask the hard questions, to challenge assumptions, to question conclusions. Your responsibility is to make absolutely sure that the administration's proposal is the only viable path and will actually achieve the desired outcomes. Unfortunately, it quickly became apparent to many of us that you were either unwilling or unable to perform your duties, especially when many of you used your time in the last board meeting to hush all parents for some unfortunate emails sent by a few, when one, you spent her...sorry, I totally missed my spot, demonstrated the community involvement doesn't work by reading a list of names or parents who had apparently participated in some previously failed attempts. Oh. So, the parents and community members did your work for you. We have provided you with overwhelming evidence that bold proposal is deeply and hopelessly flawed. We have shown that even under the most optimistic assumptions, that realized savings would perhaps be $200,000, not the 1.26 million. We have demonstrated that the administration misapplied and misinterpreted the demographic analysis. Perhaps, most importantly, we have established beyond doubt that the administration... Perhaps, most importantly, we have established beyond doubt that the administration has absolutely no plan to actually execute this proposal and defined in quantifiable goals to assess success or failure. To approve this proposal, you will need to willfully ignore all this evidence and intentionally take in an appropriate action. This will cause irreparable harm to your children, our parents, and our communities. If on February 11th you so choose this course, then we, the parents and community, will have no choice but to pursue all appropriate permissible recourse available to hold you, the board, accountable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric will be followed by Krista Thomas and Dustin Hayland.
My name is Eric Anderson. I live at 5511 Oak Green Place North in Oak Park Heights. I'm the parent of two children, a fifth grader and a fourth grader at Lake Elmo Elementary School, and I've worked for Stillwater Area Public Schools for the last 18 years. I want to start by giving thanks. I want to thank our 528 St. Croix Education Association members. We have over 5,200 years of experience in public education. And to the rest of you who teach our children on a daily basis with a wide variety of important roles and responsibilities within our buildings, thank you. Thanks to our current 2015-2016 administrative team, 33 loyal public servants, including building principals, with over 704 years of experience in public education. You've devoted your lives to this work, and you know it well, and as a parent, I say thank you. To our district's Board of Education, who worked tirelessly in an often thankless environment, I say thank you. And finally, thanks to our entire community, who regardless of where our children attend, have adopted what I describe as a "by any means necessary" philosophy in ensuring that their children's academic success. Despite what many of us have read on the back channels of Facebook, it's my belief that none of us entered this profession with any hidden agenda, other than to be contributors to the limitless potential of the students and families that we have the honor and privilege of serving. Divergent perspectives? Yes. Hidden agenda? No. To be clear, in regards to the topic at hand, I'm speaking on behalf and in favor of the BOLD proposal. That said, exploring school closures is not easy. Such decisions reflect the core identity of local communities, and I do not share my beliefs with a light heart. I see two major components to this complex issue. The first, and they're going to sound similar, is the education business, and the second is the business of educating our students. In my experience, you simply can't do one without the other. To the first point, unfortunately, we currently have funding and spatial disparities in our school district, too much empty space, and not enough functional systems and structures. The second component is the business of educating our students. And from my lens, the first challenge creates the second challenge. To be more concrete, in the last 15 years, we have continued to cut instructional staff, technology staff, administrative staff, custodial staff, health services staff, and special education staff, while continuing to increase staffing ratios on one part of the district and activity fees to the tune of $23 million. As a parent, I say enough. Again, I've worked in the district for the last 18 years, and I have children, and I've had children in our learning system for the last six. This is important. I would argue that there has not been an intentionality around these disparities. And I choose to believe that the intention of all of us is to be on the same side, meaning that our thinking and actions are rooted in what we believe is best for all of our students, our teachers, and the long-term health of our district. That's my belief about our intention. My belief about impact, however, is rooted in the problem of invisibility toward these long-term and ongoing disparities that currently exist. To repeat my earlier statistics, budget reductions have occurred in 10 of the last 15 years totaling over $23 million. Once we recognize these disparities, once we recognize that these disparities exist, and to be crystal clear, these disparities do exist, then we have a professional, moral, and social obligation to address them. I wish our Board of Education the best as they wrestle with this difficult and courageous decision, and I ask that you vote in favor of the board proposal.
Thank you.
Krista Thomas. Krista will be followed by Dustin Hayland and Allison Comarage. Sorry, I'm the last name. Krista.
Hello, I'm Krista Thomas, and I live in Stillwater. My address is in the computer there. I do have three children. My oldest is at Withrow, and we alternate enroll there. We live in a development that is aligned to Stonebridge, and we spent a lot of time touring Stonebridge and spent some quality time with the principal there, who we were very impressed with. We were very impressed with the facilities. Withrow just happened to be the right choice for our son. We knew he needed something different, and so we were fortunate to be able to make that choice. I've really been trying to understand the proposal for several weeks now. If there's a silver lining to any of this, it's that I've been able to meet a lot of incredibly talented people in this community, probably more people than I would have ever had the chance to meet before, including board members, including administrators, and certainly a lot of parents out here and teachers. Tonight, I want to speak to you about alternative solutions. Ms. Pontrelli, as well as board members, have asked us to come up with alternative solutions. I have provided a binder for you that you have in front of you there. It's just a small sample of some suggested alternatives. There's not enough time to get into the details of those, nor are they all-inclusive of ideas that are out there, but it's to demonstrate that there are people looking at alternative solutions. We ask you, are you open to hearing these ideas? Are you open to collaborating and exploring these? This is really the beginnings of a dialogue. We'd like to continue to ask time and work with you on these ideas. They represent some ideas from folks at Rutherford, Oak Park, Withrow, Mata Midae, and Afton Lakeland, to name a few. This is really to demonstrate as a community, we are willing to work with the school board and administration to work on these together. Again, I can't express everything in five minutes, nor are there things in there that are maybe the golden ticket, but these are things that we can work on together. We are really at a crossroads right now. Administration has proposed something to the far right. We might be asking for something on the far left, but there has to be some kind of middle ground. There has to be a point that works for all of us. I believe there is a solution that exists out there that is a yes vote, that we can come together and meet somewhere in the middle. It's just working together to find what that is. I've been thinking a lot about what was said at the learning session last week. A board member stated that brick and mortar decisions are not a place for community involvement. This has been weighing heavily on my mind. In order for any change of this magnitude to be successful, you need to have transparency and clarity in direction. When you involve community members along that process, you might still end up getting to the same result, but you're bringing people along on the journey. When they have an understanding, it provides an opportunity for you all to gain supporters. And when you have supporters, that's what's needed in order to be successful. Right now, I'm struggling to have a clear understanding of the proposal, and I've tried very hard to understand that. I've reached out to people in other parts of the district. I've made friends with a lady in Afton Lakeland and have learned a lot about what they're dealing with down there. Probably need to learn a lot more, but it is very clear that changes do need to be made, but what we're asking is for some time to work together to come to the right solution for the better impact for more children. In addition, the National School Boards Association states that advisory committees can be extremely helpful, both to gather facts and to ensure community involvement. We want you to know that we believe you're doing what's best for our children. You have spent countless hours trying to perfect this, but we're not there yet. When it comes to alternative ideas, one of the items in the binder is one that has already been supported, and that is the Long Range Facilities Plan. It focuses on changing grade configuration and creating equitable learning environments and addressing capacity issues, among other things. It has been proven that if we have a strong pre-K program, it results in retention rate of nearly 87%. It also speaks to Hazel Reinhardt's recommendation to strengthen pre-K and K programming. There are a lot of great things that we have already supported and voted on as taxpayers that are going to strengthen what this district offers. We're asking for a chance to see some of those things come to fruition. What is the definition of a long-term plan? Is it a year, five years, 10 years? One can certainly argue that it's not six months. There are some fantastic things in there that we would like to see come to fruition. Another alternative in the binder is the recommendation from RISDell, the marketing group engaged by Stillwater Area Public Schools. Their conducted research with prospective parents and those that have left the district or planning to leave the district include enhancing communication with parents, increased marketing, creating committees, clarifying what the district stands for, emphasize what the district offers, and being more intentional with data and proof points to reinforce claims of district. So I ask you, how can we work together? Thank you.
All right, we'll have two more speakers, and then we'll take a break. So we have Dustin Holland will be next, and then Allison is after that. Allison Comarage, who -- I don't know if Allison can shout that out for me.
Thank you. My name is Dustin Holland. I live in Stillwater Township. I also entered my address upon entering the meeting today. I have a kindergartner, Claire, at Withrow, and a preschooler, Ava, who attends Red Bridge in Marine. Thank you for the opportunity to interact with the entire board. I appreciate the time. I don't have much time, so I want to move quickly. You all received the slides at least 24 hours in advance. I want to talk about one word and one theme here, and that word is decline. The word was mentioned at least three times, if not four, in the call to order of this meeting. I'm not sure that the word decline is being represented here accurately in all the materials that I've seen. This slide we've seen, and one of the first that I saw, pointed out and became kind of a staple for a 5% to 6% decline in some of the regions that we're talking about. That's not what this slide is saying. This slide is talking about that there will be a reduction of people per household, but we will see more households and more people in Washington County. This is coming from Met Council data used by the district. These are maps that you're familiar with as well. The map on the left is Met Council representation of growth, new net household growth. The map on the right is created by the district. It's an interpretation in order to simplify the Met Council data on the left. The map on the right is not providing the full story. It's designed to make your eye look towards where the growth patterns are that the district would like you to consider. The entire white area of the map is completely misrepresented for the Met Council data. That white area from the district map legend suggests that there will be less than 1,000 new net households in that entire white region. That's not true. There's at least 12 or 14, if not more, different communities designated by lines in that white area. A way to correct this map would be one of two things. Change the legend for the white area from less than 1,000 new net households to less than 10,000, or 12,000, or 14,000, whatever that number needs to be. The other is simply put the lines on that show that there are pockets and squares of potential for 1,000 new net households on that map. This is a map from Met Council you didn't see. It's on the same report as the Met Council Thrive to 2040. This map's a little different. It shows a percentage change in new net household growth. What this map is showing is there's actually going to be percentage increase in growth of new net households in the northern part of the district that may outpace growth in the southern part of the district. So I took the liberty, and I'm sorry, that's a terrible color. I didn't mean for it to show up like that, but that's the area in question. That's the area where we want to look at closing schools. And I took an interpretation. I took the -- you can look at it both ways, with either the blue Met Council map or the orange map. That area in that green color is conceivably, with the Met Council's own data, could result in 4,000 new net households in the next 24 years. That includes some specific data from the City of Stillwater Planner. Much of that would be 1,600 and some in just the Stillwater, but I talked a little bit with May Township, and there's some growth patterns there that are emerging that may not have been accounted for here yet. So again, I'm not sure decline is being used in the right sense here. This is another statement that is made that insues decline. It implies decline, but it doesn't. In 2035, there'll be more 65-year-old people than there will be under the age 18. That's a true statement. This is what it looks like on the right. You can see, we'll have more older people. We'll also have more younger people. Lastly, birth rate is declining. It's an easy metric to use. It's also easily misunderstood. Yes, birth rate is declining. It has been since the 1960s. That's the bottom line on the chart. The upper line is number of births, steadily increasing since the 1970s. Board members, you are being asked to make a very long-term strategic decision. I believe it's a deviation from a previous strategy. You're being asked to make this decision in a very short timeline. Use vigilance. Ask rigorous questions. Demand rigorous answers. I believe you're only seeing some of the data. It's being presented in a very concise format. You need a broader perspective. Thank you for your service on the school board. We are counting on you.
Hi, I'm Allison Comaric, and I currently reside in Marine on St. Croix. We are an open-enrolling family, and we are one of the families that Barb was talking about that recently moved into the district. We're currently building a home in a neighborhood where five of the 10 homes in that area projected not for growth. Five of the 10 homes, we all have school-aged children, and we moved to the area specifically so that we could have our kids attend either Marine or Withrow Elementary. I've spent the past five weeks really engulfed in research and discussion about this BOLD proposal. I've listened carefully to what has been said by the administration, by the board, by people who are in support of the proposal, and also people who are in opposition to it. There are a few things that I feel strongly about that I'd like to speak about now and share at this point in the process. First, I recognize that it's universally known that the Stillwater School District is facing challenges. We are in need of direction that will improve our district's situation. I'm in strong support of many of the goals stated by the district, including improving access to resources for students who do not have them but need them, also stabilizing our district's finances so that we can be viable in the future. However, as many presentations have clearly pointed out this evening, the current BOLD proposal, in its current form, does not provide evidence that it will bring the help that the district needs and achieve its stated goals. Many of us in opposition would be willing to say goodbye to the buildings that currently house our children if we saw evidence to support that by doing so, there would be a good chance of increasing the overall success of our district and bettering the education of the children and our community at large. This evidence does not yet exist. We are not clinging to bricks and mortar. We are clinging to facts. Second, I would like to address the rhetoric that those of us who are in opposition to BOLD are selfish and not in support of what is in the best interest of the entire district. In reality, we are looking out for that. We are looking for the facts. I'm a huge proponent of evidence-based decision-making. I use it both personally and professionally. If upon digging into this plan it had become apparent at any point that this plan had stood a good chance of succeeding in its stated goals, then I would have changed sides and tried to support and sing the praises of the proposal. That has not happened because the evidence is not there in the current proposal. Third, I would like to direct you to recall something that was said at your learning session on January 7th. A question was asked about the impact and what it would be if you knew the boundary changes, bus times, transportation costs, and all of this information before voting on your proposal. Ms. Hojoisel answered the question as follows. "The boundary changes won't come until a decision is made. Otherwise, we are running many scenarios. It is just an insane amount of time. Just like with anything, we want to do our best, not to miss it. We want to make sure that it is complete, accurate, and as thorough of a process as we can make it." I would like for you to think about this answer for a moment. Ms. Hojoisel referred to herself in that meeting as a CFO. Ms. Ho Hoysel referred to herself in that meeting as a CFO. Let's work from there. I want you to envision a really good, functional business environment in which a CFO is invited into a meeting with the Board of Directors and the CEO. The Board asks the CFO to run an analysis of the costs and risks involved in a few scenarios for a proposal that's on the table. The CFO responds by saying, "We shouldn't do that because it would be incredibly hard, time-consuming, and I would have to look at it from a few angles to get it right, and I really want to get it right." Do you think that a Board of Directors and a CEO would accept that answer and move forward with the proposal anyway? Better yet, do you think that they should accept that answer? Let's also look at it through the lens of an educator. If a teacher asks a student a question and that student responds by saying, "I don't think I should consider that because it would be difficult and I might have to do it more than once to get it right," should a teacher accept that as an acceptable answer? Going back to the same question at the learning session, Dr. McDowell included in his response, "We realize we need as much time as possible to plan, and the more time you have to plan something out, the better the product is going to be." He also said, "If you move kids around, you need time to figure out what the new thing looks like." I agree fully with his sentiments. What I struggle with is the logic behind waiting until after you vote on this proposal to determine if you have a good product. I urge you to make sure that you have been provided with all the relevant information before you vote, so that you can be assured that you have a good product. Please consider redrawing the boundaries first before you make a decision. If you get the answers to the relevant questions, and they provide evidence that closing schools is truly the best way to go, then please share that information with the public, and we will all move forward together as a community. If the information guides you in a different direction, we will work with you to support you there as well. However, please do not vote based on assumptions or a sense of urgency to make things happen. Please demand facts first. Finally, I would like to say that I recognize it is true that even with the best of intentions, all decisions have the potential to lead to bad outcomes. However, you have people here tonight who are raising the red flags and doing some of the legwork and fact-checking for you. We are eager to work with you to find the right proposal for our district, one we can stand behind in confidence because it is supported by evidence that it will help our district achieve its stated goals. Please allow us to help you in that process. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Five-minute break, and then we'll come back. If you would take your seats, please, we'd like to get started.
Our first speaker will be Todd Clarkowski, followed by Ziz Weisberg and Stacia Rivers.
Good evening. My name is Todd Clarkowski. I live at 13665 Oldfield Road North, Stillwater, in May Township. I request that the Board on February vote that you don't close Withrow School. We really haven't had, have not heard of a clear definition of what the problem is that we're all trying to solve. We haven't even begun to start developing alternatives to that, to solve that problem, and we have not had adequate public involvement in this whole process, nor have you allowed a reasonable timeframe for this to happen. You've heard a lot of different alternatives already proposed tonight in a very short, condensed timeframe that was actually allowed to provide you comments. I am a Withrow parent. I had two daughters that went through Withrow School. The quality of education, the quality teachers that are at Withrow, and the kids' experience is just amazing. They were very lucky to go there, and I have nothing but positive within our educational experience within our family in this very small school at Withrow. I'm a homeowner within five miles of Withrow. We selected this home eighteen years ago because of Withrow. We wanted our kids to have that small school experience and visited Withrow, and Withrow provided that. But within that, within the proposal, what impact will this proposal have on my property values as a homeowner within five miles of the Withrow School? How will that change May Township? You heard earlier, support of May Township's resolution, providing a no vote or recommending a no vote on this proposal. How will it affect the surrounding area, not just my only, not just my home, but the surrounding area? What studies have you done to indicate that? Over my, with kids going to school, I've seen and I've experienced transportation issues. I've heard from the school that the transportation issues were getting so extensive that now we have to bump out a radius and more parents have to bring their kids to school. We've heard that over time. I've heard that over time. But now, yet, you're proposing something here that basically, if you're closing off with these schools in the northern part of this district, you're going to introduce some significantly extreme transportation costs into this, into this proposal. And how could, how could the school closures possibly be cost-effective when you're introducing all of these significant transportation costs into this proposal? And the student time inputs. You heard earlier from another commenter about the quality of time that those kids would have. Is it really acceptable for our kids, kindergarten through sixth, to be sitting on the bus fifty-five minutes in the morning and fifty-five minutes in the afternoon? It is not acceptable to me. I don't think it should be acceptable to the Board either. We can really do better than that. We really can. So I would recommend that you take a step back and you send, you spend the time to determine if these, if there really is a problem, and define our problem, and allow adequate time to understand if those forecasts are accurate and true, especially with all of the proposed changes to the high schools that are going to be coming up. And then come up with many alternatives, not just one alternative, not just throw a proposal on the table, but come up, develop many alternatives to this solution. Then let it be vetted publicly in forums like this where we can exchange dialogue back and forth and not just prevent, present one side of the issues. We would like to come up with a preferred alternative with you through that alternatives' analysis. Weigh the pros and cons of each one of those alternatives, but come up with a preferred alternative that solves our problem. What you have with this proposal to close Withrow is not our preferred alternative. It is not considered what economics impact there would be, what social impacts there would be, what environmental impacts and what community impacts there'd be. None of that has been considered with this proposal. So on your vote, I request that you do not close Withrow School or the other small schools. But tonight's public hearing is about Withrow, so I request that you do not close Withrow Elementary School, so that this can be studied adequately in a timely fashion, and we would like to work with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ziz Weisberg, Stacia Rivers, and Lynn Clarkowski.
Hello, my name is Ziz Weisberg, and I live on Kimbrough Avenue in Grant. In medicine, we have an ethical concept called informed consent. Anyone who's ever had surgery has signed consent forms. Your doctor can't do anything to you without your permission. If I recommend surgery, you need to know what I plan to do. You need to know the benefits and the risks. If we discussed removing your tonsils and instead I removed your kidneys, that's malpractice. Voters expect to be adequately informed what we're voting for. Closing schools without voter consent violates a very similar ethical principle. We voted against school closures when we passed the levy in 2013. In 2014, the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee presented their final report to the school board. They met for almost a year, with eighteen members of the community, including teachers and parents. The report was data-driven. The report was publicly presented to the school board on November 14, 2014. Dennis Bloom, the former Director of Operations, clearly stated the committee did not recommend closing schools. Not everyone on the Board agreed with the report in its entirety. Two Board members had principled concerns regarding the expensive athletic improvements. They proposed an amendment, but it didn't pass. At no point did a Board member propose an amendment to close or consolidate schools. The Board unanimously approved this long-range plan on February 19, 2015. This plan was the foundation for the ninety-seven and a half million dollar bond proposal recommended to the voters. We weren't just asked to approve a lump sum. How the money would be spent was the vision of the bond proposal. The Board unanimously endorsed this vision. Unfortunately, this long-range plan lasted only eight months. In December, current administrators presented a brand-new plan. They met exclusively in private. They didn't include anyone from the community. We were told that closing schools wasn't on the radar until a new formal capacity study showed unexpected results. They were shocked when they saw the numbers. We were told that the Long Range Facilities Planning Team did not complete a comprehensive capacity study. It was the in-depth capacity study completed this fall that brought the full impact of the capacity challenges to light and upon which this proposal is based. This is a direct quote from the district's Right-Sizing Facts vs. Fiction information page still on the district's website. What we now know is the Long Range Facilities Planning Team did perform a comprehensive capacity study. Administrators really used old demographic data. The data wasn't new, or shocking, or unexpected. What is shocking is their plan to close Withrow, Marine, and Oak Park Elementary Schools is based on a series of false statements. They also presented a new vision, including right-sizing schools, reducing school choice, and reducing school inequities. They provided no proven model to support this vision. In fact, a similar plan in Robbinsdale has been a failure, wasting millions of taxpayer dollars. Under scrutiny, projections regarding county growth and cost savings related to closing these schools are almost certainly false. The Long Range Facilities Planning Committee report had more optimistic projections. They intended to grow the district in every direction. Especially in the north, growth was contingent on the pre-K retention rate, around eighty-seven percent, a number that grew every year it was measured. This is not a projection. It is the actual retention rate at Lily Lake, Oak Park, Rutherford, and Withrow for the year 2013, 2014. The long-range plan counted on this to grow the northern schools. This is the plan we voted for. Bold closes schools, dropping their retention rate to zero. Over these last few weeks, the administration's credibility has been hemorrhaging. I'm sure the Board shares my belief that the superintendent's team has an obligation to provide honest, legitimate information to voters and Board members. Without it, you cannot make an informed decision regarding the investment of millions of taxpayer dollars. Unfortunately, they haven't done that. So many agree that the process has been unnecessarily toxic. The blood pressure at every recent meeting, including this one, is too high. These are warning signs. Ignoring these signs risks burdening our community for years to come with a cancer of mistrust and resentment. As a Board member, do you really want to endorse such a poisonous process? Is this the legacy you want to own? It's time to stop the bleeding. I want to ask the Board these simple yes-or-no questions. One, did you vote for the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee report? Two, do you support the outcome of a fair, democratic election? Three, do you believe the district should promote partnership with the community as stated in your own mission statement? Four, do you believe the public should trust district leaders? Five, will you need voters' tax dollars in the future? If you answered yes to these questions, how can you vote for the Bold Proposal? I didn't vote for this. In fact, no one did, not even those who agree with it. None of us should accept a small group of administrators hijacking our tax dollars and our children's future without our consent. Today, it's the Bold Proposal. Tomorrow, it'll be another. We should never tolerate false statements in place of fact-based recommendations. Even if you agree with it, closing schools without voter consent is a complete perversion of the democratic process. Please vote no.
Stacia will be followed by Lynn Clarkowski and Jim Drops.
Hi, I'm Stacia Rivers. I'm a pediatrician. I actually live in Marine on St. Croix, and I have a twenty-five-year-old daughter who has absolutely no skin in this game, and you're supposed to keep going through this because I have no time for all that. This is why we are here. Okay. Before I went to medical school, I actually retired from 3M, and I have a chemical engineering degree, so I know a little bit about data, and I actually sat down to really try and look at this objectively and come up with my own conclusions and figure out what was really going on. So who has a business degree? Guys, business degrees? Okay. So first, the issue really is one of capacity, and so I took and looked at the enrollment data, because I have an engineering background, because I like to look at what's real, not necessarily projections, but what's real. And I looked at the enrollment data for the elementary schools from 2009 to the current year, and what I found was that of the ten schools, five were very, very stable. They didn't very, very much, from 2009 to the current year, their enrollment was like between ninety and one-hundred and two percent, really stable schools. There were three schools that are increasing in enrollment, and then there were two schools that are declining in enrollment. The three schools that are increasing in enrollment are, interestingly enough, the three schools that are on the chopping block. So that just really was a red flag to me. I can't understand how the schools that are increasing in enrollment are being asked to fill the gaps of the schools that are declining in enrollment. So that was the first thing. The second thing is the data. So there's two big concepts that are being presented in the Bold Project. The first one is, there's a sixteen-hundred-dollar differential, and we're trying to get equality there. So if you take that sixteen-hundred-dollar differential between the school that's most expensive and the school that's the most efficient, and you eliminate the two schools, you close those two schools, your differential, if you look at your graph, is now going to be fifteen-hundred dollars. Now, the thing I think is really misleading to the public is we have people in some of these schools that think, "Oh, we're going to save a thousand dollars to fifteen-hundred dollars. We have so much more money to spend on our students." Well, the differential's just not there. I've been one-upped by an electrical engineer who already presented some data about that 1.26 million dollars, and I did a different analysis, okay? And actually, mine's a little more optimistic, but I did not come up with 1.26 million dollars in savings. I came up with about half that, and I even questioned that number, and I gave you all the numbers, and you can email me if you got questions, but I came up with half of that number. And if you look at that number, and you look at how that's going to be spread over students, so if you take six-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars, you divide it by forty-one-hundred students, you get roughly, I mean, I did actual math, okay? Hundred-and-fifty-two dollars per student savings. Best-case scenario, you're talking about your 1.26, three-hundred dollars per student. So when you're being told that we're going to save this, that, this, that, we're going to do all these things, think realistically, can we do that with that much money? And I've also broken that down on a per-school basis, and I told you some of my reservations about why I think those numbers are still high. Then another issue that I have is just, in general, the transparency, and I'm not going to go into that because I think what's really being seen here by me is that so many people have so many questions, and we feel like we're really pressured for time. I had ten minutes of presentation. I couldn't get it all in, and so I'm probably just not even making sense at this point. But I did list some of my concerns, some of my questions, and I think, you know, there is really an issue of transparency. If you don't believe my numbers, I got them off of the website. I got them out of reliable sources. I really thought that, you know, I was doing the best job. And at first, I thought that I was going to come up with a 1.26 million dollars in savings, but I actually found a math there. Sorry, guys, I did. And that math there was this. It assumes that you save sixteen-hundred dollars per student, and that's not the savings that you're going to see. In conclusion, let me get to that point. I'm going to speak as a pediatrician here. I feel so fortunate to be in an auditorium full of people and in front of a group of people that I know loves children, and I know we all value education. There is no doubt in my mind. I would ask that you would please say no to Bold, because I think it will further our trust in this Board's consideration to seek true solutions for our children, and also show that you trust us as a community willing to work towards cooperative and creative solutions to the best interests of our children and their future. Thank you.
Lynn Clarkowski. Lynn will be followed by Jim Drops and Greg Ryan.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Clark-
My name is Lynn Clarkowski. I live on Oldfield Road in May Township, and yes, you heard from my husband just a few minutes ago, and many of my neighbors. As you heard from my husband, we have had children attending the Stillwater School District eight-thirty-four for approximately the last fifteen years. Although we're nearly done with K through twelve education, we want to just thank you for the quality education that this district has provided in the past and the time that you devote to the taxpayers in serving us. I'm here tonight, although, to express my disappointment at the process being used, like many of our neighbors here, the lack of information being shared and the short duration of timeline in decision-making. It was only just several months ago that the district residents were voting for a levy for capital projects. I do read that literature thoroughly. I take it seriously before I place my vote, and I, like many of the people that have spoken here, I don't recall any information about school closures in this level of specific detail in that information that I was voting on only several months ago. The school closures were not emphasized to that degree, and we only started hearing that information several weeks ago, not even months, but weeks ago. The timeline for having a widespread campaign on the three school closures is too short, as we've heard from many, many, many people. While the Board has produced infographics, not the Board, the administration, infographics on the many years of the Bold Plan, those plans lacked specific detail that we only started hearing about just weeks ago. The specific proposals had weeks of discussion with insufficient details on both the benefits and the impacts to students and the community at large. I was just reading yesterday that the city of Marine has had a community school in that village for over a hundred years. I think it was close to a hundred and fifty years. So they've had a community-based schooling system for a hundred and fifty years, and we're going to take weeks to shut a school that's been in existence for over a hundred years, and that just, it struck me. It was like, holy cow, we're doing something in weeks that has lasted for a hundred or more years. And I believe the city of Marine is also on record with having concerns. The information highlighted in the infographics at the very high level of the detail provided highlights of the benefits to the students and the district finances. Equity is one of the benefits being discussed, and I understand that there are benefits to school consolidation, and given the challenges you all face yearly, which are tremendous for balancing the district budgets, I understand why you're considering this very drastic change. But what's missing in your materials, as you've heard from many of us constituents, is an honest and detailed plan that compares the benefits and the impacts to students and the community at large. You've heard about transportation impacts. You've heard about community impacts. People do place their decisions on where they live based on schools, and that has an analysis that some gentlemen have done a fabulous job showing the numbers better than I can in just my simplistic read of it, but it's not analyzed, and it's not antiquated. It's not analyzed and brought forward. I've searched your website many times, and I can't find the detailed analysis, as the last speaker pointed out, that you deserve to give us before a decision is made. I work for state government. I have to provide, help provide transportation services to all of you that drive on Minnesota's highway system. And when we make a, we plan a project, we do have to have a series of alternatives when we have this far-reaching of community impacts with benefits and impacts not only discussed but analyzed, a full range and suite of information provided, and a benefit-cost analysis that gets down to numbers to show you have a positive rate of return, and that has not been provided. So in summary, with my thirty seconds left, I believe that not having a school in the whole entire, more than a third of the northern geographic part of our district is irresponsible. I believe that is not equitable, and that if we want to talk about equity, you should discuss all forms of equity and not just the piece of equity that you're focusing on. So thank you tonight for hearing all of us. I was impressed that in the few short weeks that we've been hearing about this, thousands of citizens, elected officials from Stillwater, Hugo, Oak Park Heights, Washington County Commissioners, State, House, and Senate elected officials, and the public have all been consistently weighing in in just a few short weeks about the disappointment in the process being used to make this decision, and you're breaking down the trust of the very constituents you need to support you to keep your finances even at level playing field. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim Drops. Jim is followed by Greg Ryan and Erin Kelly.
My name is Jim Drops. I live on one-hundred-twenty-Second Street North in Hugo. I recently moved to the Withrow area with my wife and three-year-old daughter. We are not yet members of the district, but I am a home builder and a real estate broker. So I was curious about the housing and growth data being used in the Bold Plan. At the presentation of the Bold Plan on January seventh, district officials showed us the above map and told us the white areas represented areas of no growth, and that the county would actually experience a five-point-two-percent decline in growth in population by two thousand and forty, based on the council's projections. But when I looked at the Met Council report, on the same page as a white and blue map, there's a red map showing significant growth in the entire district, and forty-five to ninety-percent growth in the northern part of the district. It turns out, the five-point-two-percent number they've been using actually refers to a small decline in average people per house. I did get confirmation from the Met Council on this. It appears district officials misunderstood this data when they presented it. I sent my concerns about this to the Board Monday night, and I have some new information out of today. After talking with the Met Council today, I learned that they were contacted yesterday with a request for some detailed demographic information on the school district. This information was requested by Dr. Robert McDonald of the Bold Team. To recap for you, I sent the Board members my concerns about the demographic data at five PM on Monday. Tuesday morning, one of the main architects of the Bold Plan is uncalling and emailing the Met Council for detailed demographic info on our district regarding projected population and households.
I'm going to stop you for just a second. I think you're maybe crossing over there. I understand sarcasm, I think.
He's allowed five minutes, and you're not going to respond.
That's not the way this is going to go down. That's not the way this is going to go down. We said at the beginning of this thing that this was going to be conducted in a professional manner. That is...
It won't happen again.
Thank you very much.
I also learned that this was the first time district officials had contacted the Met Council for help or information. This was yesterday. It appears the extent of their prior research was pulling the white and blue map from the Met Council website. I ask you, Board members, very respectfully, if you believe these recent actions indicate an administration confident in their demographic research, I ask you if you believe that those calls to the Met Council for detailed demographic information should have been made six months ago, not two weeks before the vote to reshape our district? And I ask you, and I'm sure others will, if knowing this new information now, you believe the Bold Team had likely done enough research prior to proposing this plan. As alarming as this all may be, there's more. It turns out the actual enrollment projections and capacity numbers being used in the Bold Plan are mainly from a housing study done by Hazel Reinhardt in two thousand and fourteen using housing data. These projections have been used to show low capacity in a few schools, but when I looked into the studies used to make the projections, I discovered they were made using housing data from two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelv-, uh, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. These are bottom-of-the-barrel recessionary housing numbers. This matters because demographers use home sales to determine how many new kids are coming into the district, as each sale often represents a new family with kids. If the housing market, if the housing market had stayed where it was back then, we would have accurate enrollment projections, but we all know that did not happen. We all know that the housing market has been booming for the last few years and is still increasing. When I checked the numbers for two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fifteen, they showed eight-hundred-and-thirty-two more home sales, or thirty percent more than the old data. They use complex ratios to calculate how many students those eight-hundred-and-thirty-two new families will bring, but what we can certainly understand is that if the underlying data is thirty percent higher, the resulting enrollment projections should be thirty percent higher, and it's already begun. The district has been surprised by forty-one more students than expected in the last two years, which officials have called remarkable. I do not believe it is remarkable at all when you look at the data. Based on these findings, I believe if we close these schools, we'll be back here in a couple of years with overcrowding and forced to spend millions on new schools, because we sold three of them. So now we have a situation where there's a plan to remake the district, schools and parents are pitted against each other, and it's all based on old data, and that's provable. And no one in this room really knows how many students are going to show up this fall. I believe we need to table this plan. We need to do the actual research, talk to the Met Council. They'd love to talk to everyone in this room. I don't believe you can reshape a school district, make decisions with millions of dollars, and take kids out of the school they love without dated, thrown-together, last-minute data and research. I don't think that's the kind of school district that any of us want to support, want to believe in, and want to be a part of. Thank you.
Greg Ryan will be followed by Erin Kelly and Marcia DeWolfe.
Hi, my name is Greg Ryan. I am a candidate for U.S. Congress in Minnesota's fourth congressional district. I have two children, but we live in Roseville, so, but I still have skin in the game representing potentially all of you. Closing down schools will result in consolidating into an institutionalized environment, less guidance, less individual attention, less opportunities to achieve excelling in studies, sports, the list goes on and on. The closing down will result in parents making decisions to homeschool them or putting them in private schools. The cost of a bad or flawed education is expensive. The economic drain on the school district, the future employer, the individual's income is profound. These are what studies show. Experimental discipline, experimental discipline policies in Saint Paul and Minneapolis, take-it-out, talk-it-out tactics are not good. No expulsions or suspensions policies. Foreseeable sex offenses are up ninety percent year-over-year according to state statistics. Assault with weapons causing serious injuries are up sixty-nine percent based on Saint Paul, Minneapolis School District. Enrollment will increase for the Stillwater area based on these figures. People will decide to move to this area to put their children in schools. What could happen with the vacated schools? Charter, private schools? The parents might decide to just open up a school themselves. We don't know that for sure, but that's what might happen. They might compete against the school district. It is often said that the measure of a civilization is how it treats its weakest members, but when it comes to the education historically, the opposite is true. One can often judge a civilization's staying power by its most highly educated members. Internationally, we are starting to slip. We need to take corrective measures. It's time. You can judge a school by its book lists and by its school board. It's school choice week. It's time. Let's make the decision. The Board should make the decision, so the parents don't have to. Thank you.
Erin Kelly, followed by Marcia DeWolfe and Clyde Wiedner.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to talk. My name is Erin Kelly. I live at six-seven-one Addison Alcoa in Woodbury. A couple of years ago, both of my daughters, at that time, were in first and third grade, were enrolled at Lake Elmo Elementary. We loved that school. The staff and faculty administration were great. Before the beginning of the school year for my third grader, who was going to be a third grader, we found out that she was going to be in a class with about thirty-five other kids, and I thought that was kind of high, and I did some homework and realized that is kind of high. And so myself, along with a number of other parents, scheduled a meeting with the principal and with the superintendent at that time to talk about that. And in preparation for that meeting, I did some education myself to learn more about the district, and it came to my attention that there were a couple of schools that have generally lower class sizes on a year-to-year basis, Marin and Withrow, and I thought, great, that's a good talking point, because that's a way I can rationalize what we're trying to say here, is that, you know, basically, we would like a lower class size, especially in consideration that Lake Elmo has a very different demographic than a lot of the other schools in the district. And so as part of that process, which was rather painful, we spent a lot of time and energy in the weeks before school to try to advocate to get that extra teacher in the classroom. And in the conversations with the superintendent at that time, he had said, he literally didn't have any money to allocate another teacher. I believed him, and, but I simply said, hey, could you take a teacher from Marin or Withrow so that we can have a reasonable class size at Lake Elmo? He said, no. Fine. And as part of that process, we ended up actually getting that teacher at the last minute. I'm not sure where the money came from, but it happened. Before that time, I had actually suggested to the superintendent, has he ever considered closing those schools since the enrollment is so low? He said, that would be impossible. We don't talk about that. That would be very contentious. And I kind of walked away. I didn't push it. I just scratched my head and thought, well, why don't we talk about these kinds of things? Anyway, I came to the realization, my wife, that I just didn't want my, to be fighting every year this type of battle, and I kind of knew it was shaping up that way, that we were going to have to fight and scrape to have reasonable class sizes at Lake Elmo. So we put our kids on the waiting list for Saint Croix Prep. They got in, and they've been there for two years. We love that school, too. A couple examples, we live in a cul-de-sac of about ten homes, and of those, there are a total of six, including our girls, that made the same decision for similar reasons, that Lake Elmo is just simply overcrowded and under-resourced and just didn't have the time and energy to fight the battle. And so, now, in addition to that, there's another family in our neighborhood that actually, they were at Valley Crossing, and since that's no longer going to be an option, and they visited Lake Elmo one afternoon and saw that, came to the same conclusion, and actually did the extreme of selling their house and moving to a nearby neighborhood. Now they're in the South Washington County District for that reason. So I'm just saying this as a real-life example of the other side of the equation, that, you know, in my neighborhood, that's eight kids. I think it's about ten thousand dollars from the state per kid, so that's eighty thousand dollars in my small sphere that have left because of this issue. So I know someone else brought up in the crowd tonight that there's, you know, what is the problem we need to fix? I don't know all of the problems. You guys know better than I do, but in my life, this Lake Elmo is an issue that needs to be dealt with. And so, on a, on a, on a personal note, I would say that, you know, for the Board members, I'm sure you're getting a lot, a lot of flack, and I bet there are mayors of a lot of these townships and cities that are all over you about this. I would say they're doing their job, right? Their job is to advocate on behalf of their constituents what's best for their city. Your guys' job, I think, is to do what's best for the district as a whole, right? So you have a different constituency to keep in mind. On a second personal note, I would say, I debated about whether to come tonight, because I don't necessarily have my skin in the game, because my girls are at Saint Croix Prep. I felt a little guilty when I left Lake Elmo, because I felt I'm a person that I will speak out, and I'm leaving this, 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 this fight and not doing what I shouldn't be doing. I thought, well, I should probably come tonight and say this. I respect the parents that are here. If I was you guys and my school was going to be closing my kids, I would be just as passionate as you guys, right? As parents, we are wired to, it's natural, to defend our kids in what's in the best interest of our kids. I would be doing the same thing. So I'm not against you guys at all. What I would implore the Board, though, is to think about what is best for the whole district, and I do see that there is a discrepancy in equity in the district. That's why my family left. So I'm hoping that you weigh that as you make this important decision. Thanks for the time.
Marcia DeWolfe. Marcia will be followed by Clyde Wiedner and Marty Gane.
Hi, Marcia DeWolfe, Stillwater. Live just about a mile and a half from Withrow. This is not my genre. I'm not, I don't like being up here, but wasn't planning on speaking, so I have no formal thing to prepare. I'm a farmer, and I'm a farmer's wife. I have no data. I have no statistics. I have nothing to offer except experience and roots that go very deep. Three generations of DeWolfs have attended Withrow. Craig and I attended Withrow all of our days. Our children attended Withrow. I was a para for a number of years at Withrow. My brother-in-law was in the first class when Withrow... My brother-in-law was in the first class when Withrow opened up the very first year. Aunt Elsie was the secretary. You can see that this is far more root-based than stat-based. My nephew, who attended Withrow, is out of the school district, but he drives, he and his wife drive his children to Withrow to go to school. My other nephew, who attended Withrow, just bought a house. He bought that house knowing that his daughter would attend Marine. Marine was, for those of you that are from Withrow from years back, was like our sister school. We used to go there every year in the bus. I guess what I want to say is that there's nothing that compares to the scope of the benefits of the uniqueness of small community schools. There's a bond that is incredible, but, I mean, you drive past Withrow, and it's like, this is so cool. This is so cool to still have a small country school, a community school. And the bond between parents and teachers and kids that a small community school offers, it's incomparable, and it's a historic, it's kind of an epic thing. I mean, I don't want to sound grandiose, but it is. A few years ago, I had a Withrow class reunion, and I had like 16 of us show up. That's how deep our roots, the family that you get with a small school. We had friends that moved to Kansas City, and the first thing he said to me, I saw him at a funeral a year later, and the first thing he said was, Marcia, you would not believe the difference in our kids now that we've moved to Kansas. In Kansas, Kansas City, they believe in building more schools instead of big schools because they know the value of that small community field. What you gain from this decision cannot compare to the magnitude of permanent loss to our children and our communities. This is a historic decision, and this is a permanent decision. So we just ask you to reconsider and slow down. I think of grandpa's horses and whoa, how he used to tell me, how they'd anyways, slow down and please table this for now.
Clyde Wedner, followed by Marty Ginni and Denise Grogan.
Good evening. Clyde Wedner, 8650 136th Street North, and we're in Hugo. First, I'd like to thank everyone for this entire process, others have done so as well. And it is very difficult for everyone, and for the decision-makers, for those having to contemplate all of the facts. One of the things that strikes me right away in this process is leadership. And all of us, everyone in the room, needs to display leadership in this. A big part of leadership is presenting, presenting facts, having buy-in, and having the community buy into what you're talking about, and then going forward with a united decision as a community, at least 51%. That is something that this hasn't had, and I think we need to take a step back and show that leadership right now. I'm a coach of kids. I coached several teams at the Withrow and Marine Children, Stonebridge Kids, and I would never invite those kids onto my ball field or my court and tell them how it's going to be done, and the parents said so. You present it to the kid, you get their buy-in, and you will have an awesome support of your children. So that's something we need to consider. The fiscal part of it's been presented, and I agree. I mean, I've seen the fiscal part of this. In fact, I was on one of the boundary committees that happened several years ago. One of the committees, apparently, I don't know what happened to all the data from that, but apparently it's missing. But we put together through several weeks, months, a recommendation of how to move some of the kids from different schools so you didn't have 35 in a classroom at Lake Elmo. We moved them around a few miles, not 55-minute bus ride miles. And for some reason, a lot of that proposal got overlooked. There are alternatives to this to make classroom sizes smaller in certain communities. So I agree with the fiscal part of this. There's different ways to approach it, though, and you've heard a lot more ways to handle it and from other parts of the private sector here that I think have some very good ideas that we should consider and take our time on. I can't help but think that we're presenting, if this is passed, we're presenting, we're taking away choice, that's been decided, but we're, all we're doing is doing open enrollment for monomedii. We're doing open enrollment for the private schools. We're not going to keep these children. We are not going to put our kids 55 minutes each way on a bus. And there's other alternatives, and just take that into consideration of what the parents have to do after this is done. I want to talk just briefly about the community. One of the other things that I'm a part of, very proud of, is putting on a charitable car show at Withrow and the Withrow Ballroom. We've raised, in the last five years, well over $50,000 to wishes and more to the Minnesota Military Family Foundation, and a lot of the people in this group right here have played a part in that, and that's what community develops. A lot of the people that played a part in those shows are the children that grew up in the school, that had a value of small community and giving back. And some of those kids are right here in the room that we coached that play a part in that. They live it every day, and they can do it in other schools as well, but we do it as a matter of everyday practice. Someone said it before, or several have said it, this is a very finite decision. You can't go back on it without making dramatic changes in building new schools or whatever if the things change going down the road. Met Council is kind of the bible on how our communities develop. I find it very odd that both the mayors from Stillwater and from Hugo didn't know anything about this until they read about it. I would think that between them, who play a big part in Met Council development, and Met Council themselves, they are the bible, so to speak, on how these communities are going to grow and develop. We need to pay a big, big portion of our attention to what their studies show. So, and lastly, I just, I've also heard that we're a little late to the game here. This has been talked about for a long time, and I don't know where the community's been prior to this, that they're showing up now, but this is the first time that something this finite, this decisive, has been proposed through this process, and certainly the first time to the public. And you see the passion once everybody shows up. Let's work together and make a decision that fits, that's right for everybody, excuse me. Thank you very much.
Marty will be followed by Denise Grogan and Lance Cunningham.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marty Ginni. I live on Creekside Crossing. I've got three kids in the district. I want to start by thanking the board for your service to the citizens. You talked about a thankless job. You stepped into one here, and I do appreciate the amount of time and energy that I know you've all committed. And I want to thank the administration for the work. Many of the administrators, including Superintendent Potrelli, are new to our district. They were brought, they were recruited and brought into this district, and I am absolutely certain that none of you would choose to have stepped into this job knowing that this is what might have laid out for you. That, you know, at my office, we talk about things all the time, and we say, this problem might not be my fault, but it is my problem, and I appreciate your willingness to step up and try to solve this problem. I wanted to come and echo something that somebody said earlier, and that is that I certainly understand the passion in the room, and if my children were in a school and my school was looking to be closed, I would be incredibly passionate about it. But I'm here really to speak to the other side of the issue, and that is that my children and children that we've come into in contact with are suffering, quite honestly, and to the extent to which school board members have been on the board when previous decisions have been made. This isn't personal. I understand that decisions are very difficult and that you've had to make decisions over the course of years, but the decisions that have been made over the course of the years have had very real ramifications. We were part of the previous boundary change. We moved to our home. We were boundaried in for Rutherford, which was the Taj Mahal of elementary schools at the time, and then our neighborhood got boundaried out to Stonebridge. We sat down with our kids, and we told our kids, this is what you do when you're part of our community. We're going to go to Stonebridge. You'll get a phenomenal education at Stonebridge. We then had the administration, the past administration, and perhaps the board, I don't know what role they played, that completely fell back on all the decisions that they made. They open enrolled every kid in our neighborhood, back into Rutherford, and agreed to provide busing for them. So the first morning of school, my kids get on the bus to go to Stonebridge, expecting all their neighbors to be there, and their neighbors are all back at Rutherford, and the problem hasn't gotten solved because, again, we've kicked this issue down the road. My daughter was at Gate. For both me and my wife work, two consecutive years, we were told that Gate would be provided busing. Busing is incredibly important to Gate because if you can't provide busing to Gate, then that program is limited to people who have the means and the time to drive their children to and from school every day, right? Two years in a row, we were promised busing. In August of both of those years, we get a letter from the district, there is no money available, busing has been cut, right? My son was in the Jurick Visner Room Colony at Stonebridge, not this current year, but a year ago. There were 35 kids in each of those classrooms. I can absolutely speak to the person who spoke about Lake Elmo. It was shocking to me to hear people on the board say, there is no classroom with 35 kids in it, when we were dealing with it, and there was no funds available to hire another teacher, right? My daughter and her friend group have been pulled apart because of the colony rearrangements at Stonebridge with Ms. Kirkwood to try and Band-Aid that problem. These budget cuts, year after year after year, trying to patch something together rather than look at the root of this issue, have real implications, they have real ramifications for a lot of kids in this district, right? These, to speak just very quickly to some of the comments that have been made, we talk about these issues not being new. We talk about the, why hasn't the community been involved? Kathy, I know that at the information meeting, you spent 10 minutes laying out the number of committees, the number of task force, the number of situations that we've gone through over years, and the millions of dollars worth of cuts that have been put in place as a result, and we still find ourselves in the same issue. This is not a Withrow or a Marine or an Oak Park issue. They are phenomenal schools filled with phenomenal teachers and administrators. There's no question about it. This is a district-wide issue, right? We have 10 schools, and we don't have students to fill them, and so we're paying to operate buildings and to continue to run down this road, knowing that our long-term plan is no more sustainable than our short-term plan has been. Every year, more cuts, more teacher layoffs, more pink slips, more restrictions, right? And I really think it's time for the leadership to look at this issue and ask themselves, what is the decision that would make, that would put this district back on a footing that can allow them to grow and move forward, right? We've had votes in the past. Everybody in this room knows that we had a vote in 2011 for a levy that would have provided substantially more funding per student for the operation of the district, and that vote failed, right? The vote in 2013 to just maintain our current level barely passed, and the bond referendum. So there has not been overwhelming support to continue to pour more money into the district in order to fund these things. We've gone out and campaigned for it, but it hasn't happened. These decisions have to be made for the students at Lake Elmo, for the students at Stonebridge, for the students at all the schools who are jammed in there. You know, my son sat in an IEP meeting where he's got a list of services available to him, and you go around the table, how is he going to get the service on this day? He's not. Well, but it's on his list. He's not going to have it because there is nobody allocating the building because resources have been cut and cut and cut. Please make the bold decision. Please show real leadership in moving this forward. Thank you.
Denise Grogan. Denise will be followed by Lance Cunningham and Sue Kelly. Is Denise here? We'll skip Denise for now. We'll try again later. Lance Cunningham and Sue Kelly. And then following Sue will be Benjamin Davis.
Good evening, members of the board. I first want to say I have the utmost respect for the service you provide to our community. I one day hope I can give back to the community in the same way that you do. Just right now, my bandwidth doesn't allow me to do it. I have to work on focusing on my professional career and supporting my family, but I have the utmost respect for what you do. Our family moved to Withrow area a little over two years. We just, we live in Hugo, just a mile away from Withrow Elementary, just in time for our youngest daughter to start kindergarten. She's now in second grade. We have been more than impressed by not just the quality of education, but more importantly, the culture of acceptance, respect, and inclusiveness of the Withrow community. We have been excited for our younger daughter to start at Withrow as a kindergartner this fall. I have quickly become a proud member of ISD 834. I help coach my daughter's hockey team, and I wear this pony jacket almost everywhere I go. I am a proud Stillwater District parent, and I plan to continue to be so. When the levy and bond came up, I helped support, like many others, both the levy and bond, and had the understanding that it was necessary to support Withrow and the other schools going forward. All that changed on December 18th, 2015. While I was loosely paying attention on the movements of the district, I felt assured that the promises made to me and my community would be upheld by the district leadership. As a busy professional, I tried to stay in tune with the announcements, but often couldn't make it to the actual meetings that did not attend on December 17th. First thing in the morning of the 18th, I heard the news, and I felt like the rug had been pulled out from underneath me and I'd been kicked in the gut. As I reached out to those in the community, I knew and realized I wasn't alone. We rallied, we met, we built a website, we created a petition that received over 1,000 signatures in 48 hours, and it is now over 2,200 growing, and I have a copy of that along with all the comments along with it that I plan to give you. I decided to save some trees, so I'll send you some PDF of it to all of you afterwards as well. We raised money. We have spent countless hours researching, discussing, and debating. You'll hear many facts, figures, as you have heard, and stories that you've heard tonight, and we'll continue to hear more. And the one thing through all that that rings true to me is that bold is not the right solution for our community. Trust in this community was already fragile. It was rebuilt to some degree by the community involvement that formed the Bridge to Excellence vision and helped get the levy and bond passed, barely. Now I fear, no matter what the outcome of February 11th, that trust has been fractured. A yes vote will surely shatter it. A no vote provides the opportunity for the community to come together and heal and find a shared solution. District 834 is clearly at a crossroads. If anything, I have learned is that I have continued to be amazed by the amount of shared leadership, collaboration, and civic duty displayed by the group that is opposing bold. I am proud to be part of that community. I wish I could say the same about the District 834 administration. Instead, we have been met with misinformation, disdain, disrespect, and attempts to limit or in some cases silence our voices, furthering the destruction of trust between the district and the community. Bold is an idea, not a plan. A plan is clearly defined steps of execution and metrics to hold it accountable. We have heard theories from the administration how bold will be executed, but not plans. We have heard nothing about metrics for success. At this point, it's about intent versus impact. It does not matter if bold had the greatest intentions in the world. Through the research we have conducted, that you continue to hear about tonight, and we'll hear more after tonight, we do not believe bold can possibly have the positive impact that it claims or intends. Instead, the negative impact of the destruction of trust and the division of the community through a dismissal of community values and voices that this process and behavior of the administration has caused will continue for years. When a strategy, whether it is in business, government, or education, is not aligned with the culture of its stakeholders, no one wins. You may have heard the phrase before, that culture eats strategy for lunch. Bold is clearly not aligned with our district's culture or values. No matter the outcome of February 11th, we will continue to fight for our voices and values to be heard, and the culture of our community is respected and honored. A yes vote is a point of no return for District 834, so I encourage the board to vote no. A no vote to stop the damage this entire situation is causing, to start the healing process, and to work together on a plan that the administration, the board, and the community that you all are accountable to can agree on and work toward the future of District 834 we all want for our children and future generations. In conclusion, we will stop bold cold one way or another because we deserve better. Thank you.
Sue Kelly, Benjamin Davis, and Mitchell Otterston.
Hi, good evening. Hello to the members of the board. And
Hello to the members of the board and administration. My name is Sue Kelly. I live at 12900 Manning Trail, May Township. My presentation seems to get shorter and shorter, as every individual comes up here. I don't want to bore you with another, what'd you say, resurrection of what they've already done, but there are a few things that other people haven't touched on yet. Interesting enough, you do want this, I had made eight copies this evening of that Metro Council report, so I don't know if anybody would like it, but I've got eight copies here, and I'll go over some of the slides some of these other gentlemen have presented this evening. I resided in Withrow, in the Withrow area for thirty-six years. My three children attended Withrow Elementary. I am a past Withrow Education Association President and Treasurer, and what that organization is, it would be your equivalent to your PTA in other schools. We've always prided ourselves as the WEA. This isn't really my first experience with talking with the board in regards to closing Withrow and Marine. This happened a few years back. I actually was in on the talks that happened twenty years ago. I know there's been mention about folks coming a little too late to the table in regards to talking about this issue. Well, I feel like I really haven't ever left the table. So I was there, and this is not the first time, that we've dealt with the operating costs have always seemed to be a big issue with Withrow and Marine, and this has been ongoing for many years. That's one of the reasons why we, the WEA, and parents have volunteered so heavily, and also done a huge amount of fundraising over the years for both of those schools. And there was many things that we provided as parents and as fundraisers, that the school district just couldn't cover. Just as, as a matter of fact, we paid for the buses for all the field trips, so our kids could go on field trips. So we realize that, you know, this has been an issue for many years. But I don't think closing those two schools, and bringing down two hundred, three, four hundred children into an already packed, it sounds to me, the southern part of the school district, where you've already got an issue, as I've just heard from a couple of gentlemen, thirty-five students per classroom, taking, closing those two schools and bringing those kids down here, isn't gonna help your thirty-five students in a classroom situation, it would seem to me. I do understand, you do have, there is a real problem in our district in the southern half. This district also covers a hundred and fifty square miles. This district is huge. The only thing that's bigger is Forest Lake, and that's two hundred and forty square miles. You don't even want to deal with, they've had to deal with the lake. So this is a huge district. So yes, we have the north, and yes, we have the south. The south has grown at an incredible rate, and what's been going on here over the last thirty years is something called Woodbury. And what happened is, you've got, had all these giant parcels of land, a lot of agricultural producers. I know as a kid, because we used to drive down to Aspen all the time, and there were fields and fields of corn, sunflowers, and oats, and dairy farms. Well, as these farmers have come of age and retired, these big parcels of land came up for sale, and developers came in, and Woodbury just took off. And it was the fastest-growing city in Minnesota, some said even in the upper Midwest or even in the US. So this thing took off. Well, you started to start to see some more growth. Then we started to see some happening between Highway thirty-six and Highway ninety-six. And you started to see some big parcels go up for sale there, too. The Palmer Estate went up, that was cattle and quarter horses. Regardless of his place, that was another forty acres. So all of a sudden you start, oh, really? I'm sorry, because I think this is the north.
And Benjamin Davis, and who is to be followed by Mitchell Otterston and Chrissy Wright.
Okay, pass the test down. All right. My name is Benjamin Davis, and everyone knows how to find me. I am the Transportation Coordinator for the district. I also know how to find all of you. I do not have any students enrolled at Stillwater School, so it could be said that I don't have any skin in this game, but as both a resident and an employee, I'm here today to speak my personal truth. Part of the narrative I've heard is about how hard staff and parents at the northern schools have been working for years to market their schools to raise enrollment. And while I have no doubt that message is true, they have not done it alone. Not only has my department been actively involved in trying to boost numbers at Marine and Withrow through establishing shuttle stops, but we also, as a district, enlarged the attendance area of both schools in the last set of boundary changes. The following numbers were pulled this morning. Of the hundred and fifty-five students currently enrolled at Marine, twenty-eight are open-enrolled from outside the district. Twenty-one live in Area Nine, which was moved out of Stonebridge and into Marine in the last boundary changes. There are thirty-one alternates from other district schools, many of whom ride to and from the shuttle stops in Stillwater. Currently, there are seventy-five kindergarten through sixth-grade students in the original attendance boundary from the day I started working here. It's the same at Withrow Elementary with a hundred and eighty-nine students. There are ninety-nine students currently attending Withrow from inside the original boundary of the school. All the others attend through a collage of marketing efforts, transportation, and enlarging the attendance boundaries. We've all been in this together. To a certain extent, our efforts have worked. We have forty-seven open-enrolled students that are two northern schools, but the alternately enrolled students, and the students who attend because of boundary changes, most of whom ride more than forty-five minutes today, do not serve to boost district-wide enrollment numbers. Their population is a shift between buildings. A decision needs to be made. We have a responsibility to all of the district's taxpayers to use our funds wisely and effectively, to get the most out of every dollar we spend. We don't just serve parents and students, though that's the largest share of what we do on a daily basis. We don't just serve the people who voted for the levy and the bond. We serve everyone who pays a part of that bill. We cannot continue to build on sand. We need a firm foundation to grow on. I've been here just over six years, and I've served four superintendents. I'm on my third special ed director and assistant director. In fact, the only director-level position that has not turned over in the last five years is Human Resources. Everyone has either had their positions eliminated, retired, or just left. What no one has discussed yet is what will happen if this proposal does not pass. Are we going to go back to debating staffing ratios, crossing guards on Highway five and ninety-five? Are we bringing back feet for service? I do have skin in this game. I'm here to advocate for my kids, all seven thousand eight hundred thirty-eight that I transport every day. Why is our enrollment rate what it is? Why do parents choose to enroll their students to out-of-district schools when they have to drive them there every day? Or alternative in-district school choices where the bus ride is more than forty-five minutes long? It might be very unpopular for me to say this, but in my opinion, a lot of this conversation is really a debate over curriculum versus convenience. If parents are going to choose a specific school based solely on the length of the bus ride to get there, then the concern is not over the relative strengths or weaknesses of curriculum, program, or education being provided. Not one of the people who spoke about fifty-five-minute bus rides tonight called me. Twenty years of transporting students, and I am here to tell you, at the end of the day, it is not usually the length of the bus ride that drives an enrollment decision. Sometimes it's a question of if there is a bus ride or not, but most often, it's curriculum, programming, and access to opportunities that drive enrollment choices. Whatever you decide, I ask that you please take the long view, instead of a reactive or fearful one. If you can do that, I know everything will be okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Chrissy Wright, followed by Bill Wright and Daniel Doherty.
My name is Chrissy Wright, and I live on Keller Avenue in Hugo, right across the street from Withrow Elementary. We just moved in in August to a brand-new home there. I'm a parent of a kindergartner, a three-year-old, and have one more on the way. I've read through all of the materials presented by the district, and I have identified a number of inconsistencies in the data or messaging. My fellow community members have spoken or will speak tonight about many, about, and I have personally written or met with many of you to point out these areas as well. We have factually supported that the schools proposed for closing do not have either disproportionately small class sizes, cost too much per student, nor are in the wrong place relative to their projected group. Yes, some presented data would suggest that Marine cost per student is higher than the district average, but adjusting for student and teacher tenure, and considering the absolute student count, it does not cause District 834 an incremental amount that should justify its closure on this basis. The Bold proposal states, the proposal states that Bold will save the district one point two million dollars annually, which will go to improving programming and services for all students. However, based on the analysis of finance experts in the community, including my own, I would consider this figure to be overly optimistic, and not adjusted for the real risk of achievement, including the potential for incremental loss revenue from increased student attrition. Remember, it only takes a hundred students to leave the district, including open enrollment, before the loss in revenue offsets the projected cost savings. Superintendent Pontrelli has stated that the Bold is a result of a capacity study, and that all analyses to close alternative schools were considered. The district proposed a framework of guiding principles, which included, quote, "having right-sized schools," meaning four hundred and fifty to seven hundred students, and referenced a 2006 research study to justify this range. I have read the ready study, and did not find anywhere that advocated the school size was optimal. I then reached out to both the administration and the board to get clarification on this specific conclusion, but did not receive a response, or was told that it was now their job to question the administration's conclusions. I also forwarded several more recent studies that did specifically advocate that small schools may be better. However, even if one still believes that school closure is the only way, I would argue that the district has violated a well-known rule in the medical world, which is first, do no harm, meaning don't break what is working and causes little disruption as is absolutely necessary. If this principle were followed, it would have naturally led to the Square proposal, or some derivation of it. Some of the central schools, by the administration's own admission, are in need of significant updates and upgrades. The large concentrated existing student base could be relocated to other nearby schools with real capacity concerns, all within five miles, that have similar formatted classrooms and are similarly sized schools. The change for impacted students would be minimized. Parents of these kids currently do and would continue to have the option to open enroll their kids in a small school environment, for which certain students meet their needs for better than a larger format school. And all students would continue to have access to their most important services and programming, a teacher and a classroom, nearby to where they live. My question is, why was this option not more seriously considered? Unless there was an inherent bias against small schools? And speaking of options, a number of proposals have been presented to the board, including district consolidation with Matamita. Based on preliminary analysis, this alternative would save the district nearly ten times the Bold proposal, and would not involve school closures. Wouldn't that be better for all students? After all, it is about the children. Let's not let our District 834 ego get in the way of seriously considering this option. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill will be followed by Daniel Doherty and Jessica Parchetta.
Hi, my name is Bill Wright, and I live with her. All right. In October of last year, as part of her talk to the district, Superintendent Pontrelli spoke at Leaning House. She said, "We're digging out the clutter from the closet, getting rid of what isn't working, keeping what works." Getting rid of what isn't working, keeping what works. The week before Christmas, families of Oak Park, Marine, and Withrow Elementary Schools were surprised to find out that we were classified among that category of not working. Surprise actually might be a bit of an understatement. These schools, which not only are leaders of academic achievement within the district and state, are also the bedrocks of their respective communities. To these communities, as you've heard tonight, in every conceivable way, these schools are examples of what is working. But not, it seems, to this district's administration. In fact, in their view, not only were these schools not working in enough themselves, they were also the major cause of trouble district-wide. Said Ms. Pontrelli in a recent interview, "Stillwater schools have struggled because some of our elementary schools are very small." Let me say that again. Let me read that again. "Stillwater schools have struggled because some of our elementary schools are very small." Residents were shocked to learn that our own schools, far from being a source of pride and example of educational success, were now being held out as the very reason the district was being held back. Just close these schools, the promises of the Bold marketing campaign now promised, and we can start down the path toward its success. What were these, why were these schools the cause of so much angst to the entire district? Well, the campaign claimed the following. First, enrollment was declining in the north and bursting the seams in the south. To emphasize this point, demographic projections up to 2040 were used to suggest that these northern schools were simply built in the wrong place. Second, these schools were prohibitively expensive and inefficient to operate. Third, schools in the north had unfairly and inequitably small class sizes. And fourth, these schools lacked equitable access to services. The solution to all these issues was to right-size these schools and free up the needed resources. However, due to very concerned, very committed, and very capable people, some of which you've heard tonight, brought each of these points under scrutiny and found them to be wholly wanting. Rather than in decline, these schools showed the fastest growth over the past six years, in fact, really the only growth, with every other elementary school either largely flat or in a couple cases, like Lily Lake and Rutherford, in significant decline. Rather than projections proving reliable, these schools are significantly outpacing expectations. Marine's enrollment is twenty-five percent higher than Hazel Reinhardt projected just two years ago. Rather than inefficient and cost prohibitive, these schools have showed remarkable efficiency. Withrow Elementary School's cost per student, for example, is actually at or even slightly below the district average. Rather than classes half-full, these schools' class sizes were in line with the rest of the district, and in several grades at the higher end of the distribution, and in a few cases, actually the highest. Rather than showing a desperate need for services, these schools demonstrated thriving environments. These schools defy in every sense the administration's original rationale for closure. In fact, after months of work, it appears that we have a proposal which suggests to close our highest-performing, fastest-expanding, remarkably efficient, and geographically necessary schools. So much for keeping what works. In the last few weeks, as the original arguments were shown to be simply not true, the administration has focused discussion on overall district capacity, and that closing small schools still made the most sense to the various subjective criteria. Meanwhile, the marketing campaign keeps turning out misleading information, letting the casual observer assume that the schools' proposed closure are the primary under-capacity problems. I mean, if you were to start somewhere, you'd start with your most underutilized assets, right? Well, no. Once again, the problem is not these schools. Where is the problem? Well, the same areas you are seeing enrollment declines, Rutherford and Lily Lake, strangely enough. To be clear, I don't in any way propose closing these schools, or any schools for that matter. I don't see it as a viable or necessary solution. Again, I want to be clear on that. But if the administration is absolutely convinced school closures are necessary, why not start the assessment at the root of the problem? There are a lot of discussions these days around equity, that was a common thing in pretty much every conversation I had with you. So which of these scenarios is most equitable, then? Closing schools where their undercapacity actually exists, where neighboring schools are right next door, limiting the extent of relocation and travel distances, and where these schools already employ similar opening learning concept models? Or close schools which don't have undercapacity issues, which would require literally the most disruptive travel and logistical challenges to their respective communities, and will require a transition of students to a very different learning environment? How can anyone claim to stand on the high ground of equity, or even on the ground of common sense, while suggesting the second path? If that is equity, I'm afraid I've been mistaken my entire life regarding the meaning of the word. My final thought, this whole proposal is much more than just a closure of schools. It's a decision on what the district will ultimately be in value. Does academic achievement, strong communities, parent involvement, partnership of choice still have a place in education here or not? What will it be? I go back to Ms. Pontrelli's statement, "Stillwater schools have struggled because some of our schools are very small." No, quite the opposite. These small schools are some of the best things this district has going for it. I hope the board has eyes to see it, and more importantly, the wisdom and courage to acknowledge it. Thank you.
Daniel will be followed by Isaac Whelan and Caitlin Whelan.
Hello, my name is Danielle Doherty.
Hello, my name is Danielle Doherty. I live in Stillwater Township and I'm a Withrow parent. Tonight, I'm going to speak about the diseconomies of scale and the inherent costs of closing three schools, which would result in fewer but larger schools. This is research and information compiled by several Withrow parents. We have discovered that the research and rationale for larger schools is scattered and unreliable. There is great uncertainty that they really cost less and they typically don't produce expected economies of scale that result in lower per pupil costs when compared to small schools. In a review of 19 districts with school consolidations, it was concluded that there were no significant advantages or increased revenues as a result of school closures. In fact, closing schools reduces per pupil costs very little, if at all. Research also shows that right-sizing imposes fiscal hardships. Reasons for increased costs or reduced revenues that result from consolidation include: cost to move personnel from salary schedules of smaller schools to higher salary schedules of larger schools and districts; more specialized staff is needed; higher transportation and fuel costs necessary to transport students farther distances; lower public and taxpayer support for future bonds or levies; a need for new and larger facilities. In addition, one-time expenditures as a result of closing schools start with the cost to moving students, staff, and supplies. These costs commonly entail making modifications to existing schools to accommodate displaced students and staff, adding or enlarging science and computer labs, reconfiguring and restocking libraries, renovating administration areas, and making improvements such as additional restrooms, additional parking, and increasing handicap accessibility to meet health and safety codes. In fact, research studies indicate that these one-time expenses exceed $1 million per school. Furthermore, there are tremendous non-cash costs associated with school consolidation, which are impossible to measure in dollars and cents. Non-cash costs of small school closures and consolidation include the following: increased dropout rates, increased violence, a decreased sense of connectedness and safety, lower teacher satisfaction and higher teacher turnover, lower student achievement and less happiness. In regards to school closures, all costs and indirect consequences must be identified and carefully evaluated. A full range of cost avoidance and feasible economic options must also be analyzed and ranked. A thoughtful approach that respects and recognizes the importance of neighborhood schools, not only as work and learning places, but also as vibrant centers of recreation, public health, and social interaction, must be taken into account. This is particularly true in our rural areas and small neighborhoods where the school is the heart of the community. In these districts, school closures should always be a last resort, and the community must be engaged as collaborative stakeholders in the decision-making process. In conclusion, when you add up the community impact and one-time costs of physically closing three schools, in addition to the projected cost per pupil loss when parents pull their children from the district as a result of the consolidation, the $1.2 million savings not only doesn't add up, it is also not fiscally or academically responsible. With this in mind, I urge you to vote no to Bold. Thank you.
Isaac will be followed by Caitlin Whelan and Erica Shanno.
Hello, I'm Isaac Wieland. I have friends and family employed and enrolled in the district. First, I'd like to start with thank you to the board and administration. This is never an easy decision to close schools, and leaders make tough decisions, and I applaud you for your leadership. To me, Bold boils down to two things. First, responsible fiscal management. I am no engineer, but value the consulting you have done with people, with the people whose job it is to make, to analyze this data, check it, and recheck it, and present it to you. The financial savings and distribution to where these costs matter with Bold is vital to the education of all students in the district. Second, equitable education. What does this mean? Simply that, providing students the services for where they are at instead of expecting them to be at a certain place. This plan is a step towards a truly equitable and great education from this district. Lastly, as the president of one of the largest student groups of the University of Minnesota, I can understand how it feels to stand up for what is right for a majority of students and hear out those affected by a plan of action. In this case, the people this helps is a silent majority. Remember that. Change is always hard, and this hardship is evident in the tenants of those this decision would most obviously affect. There is no how-to book for closing a school, but I respect how you have included others' viewpoints and solutions, despite those claiming that this has not happened. I would like to finish with this. Stick with Bold, for it is grounded in the right reasons. I believe that this will result in a greater education for all students and a better district to come. To the board, Mrs. Pontrelli, and all of the administration, thank you for your leadership.
Isaac Wieland will be followed by Erica Shanno and Cassie Harrington.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Whelan. That's my brother. So I'm here on behalf of employees and friends and family that have been in the district. And I'll just go and start. First, thank you to the board and administration for their commitment to serving this district and being dedicated to creating the best learning environment possible for your students. Tonight, I've heard some opposition to increase class sizes and how detrimental it is to the learning environment. I can say from personal experience that when class sizes grow, diversity increases. This diversity comes in many shapes and sizes, but the differing skills, abilities, beliefs, and perspectives of a varying classroom mirror the real world our students will encounter outside the school walls. That being said, exploring classroom sizes in other areas are limiting the success of students. We all want students to leave so well to ready to tackle the world and contribute to society. Creating equity between our schools ensures that each child gets the services, attention, and education they need for where they're at that specific time. Secondly, I'd like to discuss the opposition to an extended bus ride. I've lived in rural community my whole entire life, and yes, I had a longer bus ride, but you know what it taught me? Time management. I used my bus ride to read. I used my bus ride to pair up with a buddy to do homework. I also learned to get out the door on the way there. So those are all things that we want our kids to have. I also did not miss out on the extracurricular opportunities offered to me because it was a community with my parents, grandparents, teachers, and family and friends that pulled together to make sure I could participate and be included. Community is an integral theme in all of the speeches tonight. While I understand change is hard, I also urge you to be open to creating new communities. Change also helps to create strong relationships when we lean on each other to brave the unknown and work together. In conclusion, we know there is a tough decision ahead of you all. I'm confident that you will make the best choice for the district and all its students. I support Bold and appreciate the energy, discussion, and work you've all done. Thank you.
We're down to four speakers. Erica Shanno, Cassie Harrington, Jill Cross, and Connor Simonette.
Hi, I'm Erica Shanno, and I decided to return again and missing my son's hockey because I am just that opposed to Bold. After hearing only three speakers last night that were proponents of the Bold initiative, I felt that I had to speak to their points. And first, there were only three that agreed with the Bold proposal and four tonight. And out in the community and aired on the biased news report last night, I still only, I've still only been able to now count a total of six, maybe now 10 or so, that are stating they're for the proposal. None of these individuals describes why they feel it's a good proposal. They only say that it's a viable long-term solution. It's what must be done. It will solve an equity problem, even though no one has defined how it will do so. I'm trying to understand what materials are being provided to them or what discussions they are having that make them feel that way. Many in the community that agree we must stop Bold have been performing detailed investigations on the data that's been provided thus far. It is clear that the numbers don't add up, as evidenced tonight. The sales job that is going on by the district is saddening to me. The fact that marketing dollars are being spent to sell people on this plan is not an appropriate use of dollars. And it's my understanding that at the same time that people are being told to not hand out Stop Bold flyers at schools, because political flyers aren't allowed, the district is allowed to disperse their own targeted marketing messages to specific schools. How is that okay for the district, but not the constituents? Why is a small contingent buying this sales job? Does it make you ask why you would vote yes for something with so few supporters? And why are some news agencies reporting in support of Bold not delivering unbiased news? Why is making them choose to report, what is making them choose to report in favor of Bold? To address the comments made about state representatives' statements against Bold, how could supporting the desires of constituents be considered press, as was referenced last night? With respect to equity, why do people believe this plan will enable the achievement of equity? There are no details to support it, and any information related to programming thus far has shown a further lack of equity. Example, one, continuing to house Gate in a single location and an inappropriate one at that. Two, housing the autism program at Rutherford, a single location. Three, some children will still live close to their schools while others no longer will at all. That's not equitable. With respect to financials, there's no transparency. Only a simple mind would say, "Cut out three schools and savings will be realized." Only a simple mind would say, "That will solve programming issues." We all know it's way more complicated than that. And as I stated yesterday, when you want to build a new school, because you will, it would not, it would be best to not ask for dollars in the future. People will remember this. My fourth grader said to me today, "If I had gotten into Gate and it was at the new middle school, there's no way I'd go and be separate from the rest of my class." I don't think those people understand equity. Put out a detailed plan regarding equity. Show us how shutting down three amazing schools saves money in the long run and improves capture rate. And show us more than one plan. And to address the comment from the gentleman who spoke about overcrowding at Lake Elmo, that's being addressed by a new school and boundary changes. Closing schools does not solve that problem. And there's no evidence that the plan full of holes will bring forth equity. If you really want to save money to implement equity, consider cutting parts of your top heavy administration. Thank you.
Cassie Harrington, Jill Cross, Connor Simonette, and Stephanie Whelan.
Hi, my name is Cassie Harrington. Sorry, I'm really bad about this, and it's going to be much less formal than most of the other ones, so my apologies. I do have the same questions and concerns as the people who are against Bold, but I'm not going to go through that because you've already heard all of it, and it seems to make sense to me, and I hope it does to you as well. So instead, I'm going to tell you some of my personal experience with Withrow. I transferred to Withrow from a school in East St. Paul called East Consolidated. And I went to that school from kindergarten until all the way through second grade, I went to that school. And when I was talking to my dad about this situation, he had told me about his experience at East Consolidated, because he also went there, and that's why they wanted us to go there in the first place. But East Consolidated, if I can give you a little bit of history here, was three schools, Lincoln, Erickson, and Grant, that were all in St. Paul, and they all got consolidated for the same reasons that you guys are saying, to consolidate these schools. Pretty much, and he, it was funny when I was talking to him about it, because he said word for word the same things that you guys are saying about these schools, which is that the schools needed to allocate resources and make one a right-sized school, and that was his exact words. And when he transferred there, he said word for word that that was the most detrimental part of his schooling career, and he did not end up graduating high school. Fast forward a little bit, and myself, my brother, and my sister started school at East Consolidated in the 90s, less than 20 years after the consolidation. It was overcrowded, underfunded, and parents sought other options, which is why we moved to Hugo when I was in third grade. Immediately after we moved to Hugo and I started attending Withrow, my teacher immediately noticed that I needed help. I was lagging behind, I was not keeping up with the other students, and she embraced me with open arms and offered solutions, both educationally, emotionally, and otherwise, to myself, my brother, and my sister. And my teacher at the time, it's going to get a little bit personal here, but my teacher at the time, Ms. Crinkie, went out of her way and literally bought me a little diary, one of the little ones with a lock on it, it was yellow, and she went out and she bought that, and she told me that I could write anything that I wanted in it, and I could give it to her, and she would write back to me. And the next year for fourth grade, she went out of her way again, and she requested from the principal that I get to stay in her class, because Withrow had the third and fourth grade together. Even though they wanted me to switch to a different teacher, she fought for me to stay in her class so she could continue working with me. And sure enough, my fourth grade year, I was still in her class, and we wrote in little diaries together for two years. And I guarantee you that if you have a school that is at capacity and that is 100% full, kids will not get that one-on-one attention that they need. They will not get it. Coming from East Consolidated, that was 100% capacity, you will not get it. It will not be there for the kids that need it. Fast forward a little bit to today. My sister now works at a transitional care unit in Regent's Hospital. My brother is a Lance Corporal in the United States Marine Corps. I am a college graduate and a working mother of the noisy eight-month-old in the bath, which I don't think that's too bad for three at-risk kids. You know, I don't think that's too bad. And we have Withrow to thank for that and the small class sizes to thank for that. And I'm so sorry for the other parents that spoke so that their children don't have that small class size, because it is wonderful. It is absolutely wonderful. My husband and I purposefully now are homeowners, and we bought a home in Lake St. Croix Beach because we wanted our kids to go to Stillwater. My mom still lives in Hugo. Her neighbors have seven grandchildren that attend Withrow. It's the heart of that community, and I'm sure you guys have heard that over and over again. It is literally the heart of the community, and I would hate for that to be taken away from them. Thank you.
Is Jill here? How about Connor Simonette and Stephanie Whelan?
I like others, appreciate everybody for showing up, and appreciate you guys on the board to take on this hard decision. Regardless of what side you fall on and what side you guys favor too, I think that you guys are forced with, you know, I mean, a really, a big burden on your shoulders. So I don't envy you, but I'm going to get up here and speak my point, you know, for being an opponent of the Bold proposal, and maybe just kind of shed some light on to why. I think there is some misconception that a lot of the folks here are just upset about it because, ah shucks, it affects them directly, and we're going after their schools, and then they get their feathers up and they come out in numbers, and it's emotionally driven. And that might have been what was the motivator at first, but I think as they peel back the onion and really try to understand where is the motivation for this proposal, that's where things started getting uncovered with the map that doesn't seem right or whatever. And I honestly, like Eric, if he's still here, don't necessarily think that these were all intentional, or I hope they weren't intentional, but maybe just, you know, I mean, you had four months. And I've heard four months being mentioned as, "We've been working hard on this for four months." But for a decision that is this big and has such an effect for the long-term health of this community and this river valley, I don't think four months is enough. To understand the data, to go back and check the data, and maybe bring in some key folks from the community and say, "Hey, this is what we're coming up with. Why don't you guys try it, and we'll see if we get the same number or at least get close." I don't have a fancy presentation. I got bullet points I scribbled on a piece of paper here, and honestly, it kind of hurts my eyes to look at it because all I had was a red pen. I think that we all know what the primary problem is, and that we're getting hung up on what secondary issues that we're feeling today. The primary problem, and Denise mentioned it- The primary problem, and Denise mentioned it right out of the gate, is we got 8,300 kids when we have capacity for, what, 10,000? Right? So that's the primary problem. And it didn't start six months ago. It started long before that. So when you bring up, "Hey, you guys are late to the game," well, we're getting involved now, and I think it's a good thing, because we obviously proved that we got a lot of talent in this pool, that maybe we want to bring into the conversation and see what they have to offer. The problem in the loss of kids has been referenced as, "We're losing kids to private schools. We have charters. We have homeschooling." And contrary to popular belief, the homeschooling nowadays is a lot different than what it used to be. It's not drum circles and kumbaya. And these guys have a lot of, they have a lot of curriculum that's available to them through the internet and everything else, but at the root of the problem is that these parents are choosing something that's closer to what Withrow and Marine have to offer. These parents are seeking out a closer student-parent-teacher relationship in that triangle of trust, right? And that's what they're looking for, and they don't seem like, they don't feel like they can get it to the district, so they go elsewhere. The ones that seek out and find that within the district, you find where's my friend with the ponytail, they're bussing those guys north, you know, from different pods or whatever, to kind of tap them in, whether their student was in the open architecture, and they tried it and they failed, and they want to move on, or if it's something where they seen the test scores and they, "Boy, I want to be a part of that Blue Ribbon School." So going to the motivations of where we're at, I think that the board has hired a staff, and they're doing exactly what they're hired to do. I think that they went to Denise for her proven record as being a strong soldier for the education. She hired a team of loyal followers, and they came up with this, but I think that when they reached into the well, they pulled out the top water and found that, "All right, hey, lay this. We can close these guys down. We can move these numbers into our schools that are dwindling," right? Because the true issue is not the low numbers up north, it's that the fact is that at Rutherford and Stonebridge, we have these capacity issues driven from pushing our sixth graders up and the lack of early educators coming in to fill those holes, and now we're left with hallways open. It disappoints me to find out that Rutherford had as much capacity as they did, when we have our district brothers across 36 in Lake Elmo dying on the vine down there, and they're using them as the flagship for the reason of the disparity in this proposal. The other thing that kind of confused me, and I think I only have one more minute, is the Lake Elmo, or not Lake Elmo, but the Oak Park and why, the motivation to move those kids out of there. We have sensory rooms that were just built. I'm sure they cost a pretty penny. And then there was other things, we're moving the gate in there to boost the numbers, maybe, you know, lower the achievement gap, and, oh. I was gonna finish Sue Kelly's, or, thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Whelan.
Hi. I wasn't planning on speaking. I'm Stephanie Whelan. I was gonna talk tomorrow, and that's why I'm not dressed very nicely, so I'm sorry, but tomorrow will be cuter. Basically, what I want to say is I am not an activist. I'm not a supermom. I am just a girl who lives in Oak Park Heights, and I have a couple of kids, and I didn't care about, people would tell me when I moved to Stillwater, "Oh, you're here for the schools. The schools are so great, and I'm gonna have to go." When it was time for my kindergartner to be a kindergartner, I started investigating, and I went to Oak Park. And Oak Park, when I grew up, it didn't matter what school we went to, wherever we lived, that's where we went to school, and it wasn't a big deal, and I assumed when I went to Oak Park, it was gonna be our fit. But it was so big, and I was like, "Oh, gosh." And he's my little guy, he's eight, that's what, yesterday. Happy birthday, Luca. He talks, and he likes people, and he wanted, and I could just see, "Oh, this is so many kids." I looked at St. Croix Prep, we signed up for that, we got in, and one of my friends was like, "You need to go to Marine." And I'm not driving to Marine. I'm not gonna deal with that. Went to Marine, walked in the door, and I was like, "Holy cats, this is it." And I, it's a small school, I'm from St. Paul. We don't wave to our neighbors, but you wave to people in Marine, and you know people. And coming from St. Paul and being in that building, I was like, "Wow, this is kind of, this is where we belong." And I just, Marine is a gem, and Withrow was our backup, because Marine has always been dangled. We're gonna close Marine. Every year, it's always talked about that, and I was like, "Oh, Withrow's my backup." December 17th, two of my backups are on the chopping block. And then Oak Park is two minutes from my house. I own a house in Oak Park, and it's just, I'm super frustrated, and honestly, if Marine closes and these schools close, I don't want to be like, "I'm threatening, we're gonna pull." Marine was it. Marine, that choice of having that small school, that was what we, that's it. That's what we were happy about, and I have a kindergartner coming next year, and he knows the teachers. They say hi to this little four-year-old walking down the hall, and we drop off his brother, and, "Oh, we don't do that in St. Paul. It's just the cutest thing ever." That's what I want to say. Go Marine. And also, just, I sent an email to Barb, I have a video, I sent it at 4:10 today, it was before 24 hours, and I hadn't heard, I just need to know about file size. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last of our speakers who have signed up. If you chose not to speak, but you have information you want us to get, just a reminder that you can get eight copies. You could either bring them tomorrow evening if you're gonna be here, or you could drop them off at Central Services. Other than that, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for your respectful behavior. Good night.[1792.36][1792.36](applause)